All right, hello. It's a call to order. The committee of the whole meeting for Thursday, February 6, 2025 at 6:00 PM. Looks like a forum has been met, but can be ruled over.
This is Marie.
Here.
Mr. Bivin.
Here.
Mr. Thompson.
Here.
Mrs. Wiley.
Here.
Mr. Troy.
Here.
Mr. Crady.
Here.
Mr. Fabiano.
All right, so with that, we have a formal start. So let's start with the pledge of allegiance. So we have some high five minutes coming in. Yes, go ahead.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good evening. Super excited tonight to introduce everyone to our February, Hunley High Five dinners. Not all of the students could be here tonight, but we're lucky to have the ones that are here. So we're going to ask each of them to come up one at a time and introduce themselves to you.
I am Yuselina Egan, and I'm in sixth grade in Conley Elementary School.
Welcome, Yuselina. What, uh, we're going to go two right after you introduce yourself. We're going to practice hearing all great compliments about us. I'm going to read to you what your nominator said. From the moment Yisah first explored the instruments of orchestra and band, her heart was set on playing the cello. Now as a fifth grader, she proudly plays for the Conley Fifth Grade Orchestra, bringing enthusiasm and determination to every lesson. Yisah's excitement for orchestra is contagious. She encourages her classmates to do the best and challenges herself to grow as a musician. Beyond her musical achievements, Yisah consistently demonstrates kindness, generosity, and a willingness to support her peers. She truly embodies the spirit of excellence and compassion, and we're thrilled to celebrate her accomplishments. Congratulations.
My name is Gwen Angel. I'm in second grade and I'm from McHaven.
Gwen, and here is what your nominator had to say. Gwendolyn is an amazing student. She has a growth mindset and is always motivated to do her best. Gwendolyn has shown incredible growth in her reading, and that comes from all of her hard work. She's a good friend to others, and I can always count on her to be a role model in the classroom. Gwendolyn follows champ's expectations and is respectful, responsible, and involved. Keep working hard, Gwendolyn. Congratulations. This is our, I can just read the comments if we want to go there. And who is our friend being nominated? Our friend being nominated is Logan Adamson, and he's a first grader at the U of D. And this is what your teacher, Mrs. Solano, had to say. Logan is an exceptional student who consistently demonstrates a strong work ethic and a positive attitude in everything he does. He goes above and beyond in his learning, especially in math, often completing extra work simply for the joy of learning and challenging himself. Logan's kindness and helpful nature shines brightly in our school community. He is always willing to lend a hand to both his teacher and classmates, making our classroom a more supportive and welcoming place. His eagerness to learn and willingness to help others truly embodies the leper's spirit. Congratulations.
Hi, I'm Shaylin Benos, and I am an eighth grader that goes to Heinemann Middle School.
And Shaylin, you were here for one of our student voice sessions, correct? Did you come and help with, was that a while back that we were talking about the portraits and all those? So welcome back. Shaylin takes her academics seriously, works hard, and has an amazing GPA. However, Shaylin is far more than just great. She embodies what a model teen looks like. There's hardly an activity that is offered at Heinemann that she is not involved in. Choir, orchestra, honors choir, choir, the musical, the play, the chamber orchestra, Junior National Honor Society, environmental club, student council, and service club are just a few of the ways that she contributes into life at HMS. Perhaps her best attribute is her kindness. Shaylin befriended a new student last year, made her feel comfortable at school, included her in their activities even when it was required using Google Translate to do so. It is for these reasons and so many more that we are proud of Shaylin. Congratulations.
My name is Rachel Sow. I'm from the one grade eight from our MCC.
Rachel, and here is what your nominator had to say about you. Rachel is deserving of a high five award for demonstrating flexibility and adaptability in managing changes in her schedule. She has shown a remarkable ability to adjust to new circumstances with a positive attitude, ensuring that she stays on top of her program, her work, and her personal responsibilities. She has worked diligently to develop strong work habits, which have allowed her to obtain and successfully maintain competitive part-time employment. As the second semester brings new changes, Rachel continues to show resilience and flexibility, embracing these shifts with determination and an open mind. Her ability to adapt and advocate for herself and strive for improvement makes her a perfect candidate for this recognition. Congratulations. If you'd love to come on up here and shake the board's hand, we have a certificate. But parents, thank you so much for sharing your students with us each and every day. They are truly what makes this an amazing school district. And for all of you, I know how hard it is to stand up in front of people that you don't know, but even more than that, to hear positive comments and to be able to take those. And so that was great practicing those, and we'll get better with those every single time. So congratulations again.
And parents, you could come up closer if you want. We'll be back. You could come up closer.
Slide down that way through your. There we go, perfect. So demanding, aren't I? All right, look up to one, two, three.
All right, next we'll move to number three, student recognition. We begin with Ms. Jorgensen and the rest of the musical staff to recognize some students who participated in the Illinois Music Education Association District Nine Honors Choir.
Hello, students from across Illinois auditioned each October to be a part of the Illinois Music Education Association District and state festivals. This year, we had a total of ten students from Conley High School chosen to represent our school at the District Nine Festival. We had multiple activities happening at the high school, so we only have a couple here today, but I'll pull us all ten. We had Camille Batty-Mooney, senior band, Grace Como, senior band, Christina Jaretta, senior chorus, April Otoria, senior chorus, Olivia Nenoff, senior chorus, Michelle Lewin, senior vocal jazz, Gabriela Ferris, senior treble chorus, Olivia Riddicki, senior vocal jazz, Katie Sciletta, senior vocal jazz, and senior treble chorus, Emma Sorcason, senior orchestra. These students attended their district festivals on November 2nd and November 9th, participating in a day of rehearsals, workshops, and a performance at the end of the day. So congratulations to the high school students that were selected for ILMEA District Festival.
Hi there. My name is Emily Moore, and I'm the choir teacher at Heinemann, and I'm here along with Rowdy. And we are so thrilled to have sent five students to the ILMEA festival this year. And my husband was asking, well, what exactly is this ILMEA? And I said, well, it's kind of like the Super Bowl, which is, you know, kind of like is happening this weekend. So I guess these are the Chiefs and the Eagles here. I don't know whoever you're rooting for, but we are incredibly proud of these students who spent countless hours working to prepare for their auditions. Very rigorous. District Nine is known as one of the most challenging competitive districts in the whole state. So the fact that we have five middle school students from Heinemann standing here is a testament to their rigor. But I'd also like to thank their parents. Before we do anything else, students do know, as well as I do, that they are the ones who have driven them back and forth to all of the practices to prepare for this, provided private instructions in some cases, instruments, that kind of thing. So if we could give a round of applause for the parents. Unfortunately, one of our students is sick tonight, so we'll talk about our four students who are here, and we're going to kind of tag teams. So I'm going to invite Namdi up first. Come on over to sit over here. This is Namdi Anikmadu, and he is an absolute joy to have in our music program. If there is an activity or an opportunity to perform, Namdi will be there. He is currently involved in band where he plays saxophone, choir, jazz band, honors choir, wrestling, and he was featured as the cat in a hat in Suzieville this past fall. Namdi is a natural performer. We are so proud that he represented our fair competition. A round of applause. Annabelle, come up. I'm going to let Mr. Rowdy be sad for a second, and I'm going to introduce Annabelle Rowdy, who is an absolute beast on the trumpet. And she nailed her audition, securing a much coveted spot in the ILMEA District Nine. This is no small feat. If you are a trumpet player, like this is really hard to get in. This girl is amazing. She is involved in band, choir, jazz band, National Junior Honor Society, Snowhawks, piano lessons, swims competitively, runs tracks, and was also featured as the lead in Suzieville as JoJo. We are very proud. And basketball, I'm sorry.
All right, to keep it balanced, I was going to do one of the choir ones. So Arisha. So Arisha brings her enthusiasm and positivity every time she walks down the music hallway. She was so hard to prepare her audition and always sought out more feedback and critique to improve her audition. She's a cornerstone of the music department and involved in choir, honors choir, orchestra, and musical. She's the kind of kid we all like to have in our class, someone who models hard work, talent, positivity. We are so proud of you, Arisha. And Noah McCabe is next.
Okay, he's another band, ILMEA student. He was selected to play in the French horn section of District Nine, ILMEA. He is also involved in a lot of things in our school and the community. He plays French horn in the band, sings in the choir, and he's part of NJHS, circus club, jazz band, honors choir, snowhawks, basketball. He's been on all the plays and musicals. In fact, you'll have to say, what is your position in the current play? Do you want to say that in the mic?
Senior executive sound architect.
He came up with that name. But I don't agree that it's important. All right, so beyond that, at the middle school, he's also involved in activities at the high school. Last two years, he's played keyboard, tins, I guess, right in marching band with the, oh, he did vibes this year. So two years ago, he did tins in the marching band, and then this year, he did vibes with the marching band, and then he's also been playing in my high school jazz combo, playing piano. So outside of school, he plays French horn with the Elgin Youth Tins in the orchestra and piano with the praise band at Shepherd of the Prairie Lutheran Church. There you go, Noah. And our, the orchestra student who is sick today is Ashley Wallace. She is not able to be here with us today. Let's give everyone who may not be in.
All right, so I'm going to help out. I'm the principal at Marlowe. I can't speak in detail as our amazing music staff here. And if you listen really closely, you can hear the musical sounds coming from Marlowe right now because our music teachers are directing our concert right now for our sixth graders. So I'm here to represent them, but mostly our amazing Marlowe students that are over here. So I'm just wanting to say your names and say what you participated in, so if you just stand forward when you say that. But we're really proud of all of the work that our students do, particularly Keith as well. So we have Brianna Burrows in the choir, Ashley Effetz-Rowitz in the choir, Orbin Freerak Orchestra, Alexandra Groh Band, Benisha Muthava Choir, Lauren Newkley Choir, and Harini Pramud Choir.
Do you want by school? Or do you want all of them together? By school? Okay, yeah, let's do that. So we do all together? Can we do one off together and then do you want to do by? It's fun to see the off. And now what I expect to do is a little closer so it's true in. Oh, you want all of them? And now maybe can we break down by middle school if we could? And then high school, okay?
So middle school, you have the parents, okay? So that, oh, you're, yes, some of them are supposed to take a big.
Oh, okay. Okay. So let's do middle school. Let's do Marlowe first, okay? And then everybody, everybody else could come on the side here. We'll do one with Marlowe on the board.
And if the choir can sing something while we do this.
Then are you a little bit heated? There we go. Went as the first time. There we go.
All right, one, two, three. And the high school?
Congratulations. All right, we'll move on to number four. There's a woo. Do we loop to number five, revision and adoption of the agenda? Does anybody want to add just to the agenda? All right, that'll make a motion to adopt the agenda as presented. Thank you, Mr. Quinlan. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? All right, the agenda is excluded. We will move on to number six. The curriculum and history committee will come.
Dr. McCrystal, you have a nice PowerPoint presentation for us this evening?
Yes, we do. Good evening. I did want to welcome Dr. Hoi Yu and Ms. Spears over to our table. They are our directors for data assessment and MTSS. Dr. Hoi Yu's worked with our elementary and Ms. Spears for our secondary level. And so as everyone's here with questions either of us might be able to answer. So thank you both for being here and thanks for all of your work in kind of guiding our writing innovation data assessment. So tonight, we are excited to provide an update on our social emotional learning screener and the work that we've been doing over the past year utilizing Satchel Pulse as a tool. And we wanted to give you an update on where we were and be able to see our next steps with it. First, I want to start with just what the purpose of a universal screener is. It really serves as a temperature check. So that first screener to say, how are things going? Are you on level or are you not? It helps us specifically in education to determine instruction effectiveness, which means what do all students need to receive? It also helps us begin to identify needs early by pinpointing different academic or FCL needs for students that might need additional support. It allows us to have some data-driven decisions for targeted support. It allows us to provide some ongoing monitoring to track that progress. And then most importantly is that proactive resource allocation. It allows us to proactively make some decisions so that we can adjust what we're doing prior to an issue arising. And that's something that's very important with any of our universal screeners. We currently have universal screeners for academics as well as social emotional learning. We also wanted to root in our behavior beliefs from the student handbook. Last year, the PTAC committee worked together to establish some behavior beliefs about what we believe, how we address our students' needs when it comes to behaviors. And so with this screener specifically, we're aiming to try to target quite a few of those different points in there. And while this was a pilot first to get to use it with anything new, it takes some time to be able to use the tool to its full effectiveness. We do feel confident that it is giving us some data to be able to make the right decisions for our students. And so I think it's important just to remember why we are using a screener to help us be able to hit some of those things that we were saying before in the behavior beliefs that we built out as a PTAC committee. When it comes to an FCL screener, there are some specific purposes. Most importantly is that proactive tool to assess students' social emotional skills. It also identifies those strengths and areas needing additional support in an objective way regarding those PFL competencies. It provides us some resources for our educators to help target students' needs. And then it also supports the integration into instructional and intervention strategy. So we wanted to go back into the screener implementation timeline. We haven't, I haven't been writing an update throughout the last year on different parts of this. We thought it'd be good to put it all in one slide so you can see the progress we made. In the fall of 2023, it feels like a very long time ago, we did identify a need for a new screener that actually aligned with the Illinois FCL competencies. The screener we were using before did not align with those competencies, and it was more of a behavior screener, and it wasn't getting teachers actionable data to be able to respond to the students' needs in their classrooms. So a team got together to look at the different options, and that's when we chose and selected Satchel Pulse and began that initial pilot implementation from February 2024 to now. And in that time, we have done quite a few different steps within there. There was some district and building level communication regarding the screening window, and there was in that opt-out form that students can take, and that was back in August. Our building level teams have really begun to analyze that data. We have been able to share results with families so that they're able to see how their students are scoring our competencies. We also were able to, based off of some feedback from you guys, create an opportunity for parents to provide some feedback into the survey as well, which our teams do take a look at both what the parents, if they chose to fill it out, say, as well as what the students say in order to make some decisions. It's all based on if the parent chose to give that input. There was feedback received from school leadership teams involved in FCL development. The team that we really looked at for that was smaller groups of people who were most involved in the social emotional learning in each school. So there were some teachers in that group, the intervention staff, social workers, counselors, sites, and then admin. And that really began, we got some good feedback back in December. And then our plan is to move forward, continuing to use this tool with some ongoing refinement and review. Some information about the screener itself, at the elementary level, teachers completed rubric for each student. With that opt-out, we did have 2% of our case through fifth grade students opt out, about 79 students. And then we did start the elementary level screener back in the spring of last year, and then they did take it in the fall and the winter of this year, or decided the staff filled it out that night. At the secondary level, in sixth through 12th grade, students self-rated themselves on the screener this time. 4% of our secondary students opted out, which was 209 students. And at the middle school level, they followed the same timeline as elementary, but we did not begin the high school one until the fall of this year. And so they've only taken it to fall and the winter. So there are six key areas that we really found that this tool to be successful and helpful in helping us be able to support our students' needs. The first one was aligning some best practice around assessing the Illinois social emotional learning standards. We have standards that we are responsible for teaching, and this gives us one way for us to be able to assess those, similar to what we do for academics with math and literacy and other areas. The second benefit that we found was that it helps identify the health of our system, and it helps clarify which specific competencies within the, in the subskills that we need to prioritize at a tier one, which means for all levels. The third thing that we found was that it allowed our building and teacher teams to use data to drive their decisions. Some of the feedback we were getting from our staff was before we had a screener, especially at our elementary level, was sometimes when they would fill out something on a report card regarding success indicators, it was hard because it was opinion, or they didn't feel like there was something to point to to say this is why the score might be there, or went in a conference or a conversation with families to have a data point to refer to. And so we felt like this has been helpful in that. Number four, it's really helped us identify skill gaps to target interventions. Number five, it's helped us efficiently and accurately group students for those interventions. And then six, it's given us an ability to progress monitor the effectiveness of those interventions as well. And we're going to go into each of those to show you a little bit of data that we've collected. The data we're using is information from Satchel Pulse itself, but then also from the feedback we received from our teams of educators who've been working with this tool the most. So the first one was that alignment of best practices around assessing the Illinois social emotional learning standards. And so there were three main areas that we found have found us to be useful so far. First, at school-wide strategy, we've seen schools begin to identify what lessons they actually were going to teach students through advisory or radar way or whole school lessons. Before, it was maybe just based off of the theme of the month, and it was kind of rotated through. And now, what the building were saying, we've been in quite a few school improvement meetings the last couple of days and data meetings in the last couple of weeks. And they're using this data to say, we need to do a lesson on self-management, or we need to do a lesson on relationship skills. And so they've been able to use that as a whole school, and it's also been a way to help show some FCL growth at a tier one level. And we'll show you that data in a second. The second area is that classroom-specific strategies. So at the whole school, you're able to say, here's an area students are struggling with. But then at the classroom level, kids might look different. So if I'm a teacher and Ms. Gill is a teacher, the kids in my class might be struggling with this skill, but her class is struggling with something different. And this has allowed them to be able to see that and tailor that. Specifically, at the middle school level, in some of our conversations in the last couple of weeks, they've talked about advisory. They have students that are clustered with different teachers during advisory time, and they have been able to identify those two days of that week, how do I better target my lesson towards their needs? We are being able to better integrate some of those habits into our academic content areas. We were at the high school today, actually for their fifth meeting, and one of the, I was talking to Ms. Lepa, who's the associate principal for student services, and she was talking about how some of the teachers are seeing if it's an organizational gap, or if it's a skill that may be a study skill. They're actually building time into their class proactively to help students maybe take five minutes and let's actually work on this skill because we know all the kids need that. And so that's just one example of how they use that with integrating into content areas. And then that proactive supports the students who have different needs. So instead of waiting for something to occur and to break, it's being proactive and saying, how can we help you ahead of time? And then that third area is professional learning for staff. And you're going to see this come up on the next step as a continued need. But we have been able to provide some support to staff. The tool, Satchel Pulse, has provided some resources and a bank of resources that staff can use. And over at Martin Elementary, actually, just this afternoon, at their school improvement meeting, they were talking about how they could use the quick tips, and it just gives you a quick thing to say, here's something you could do. And they were like, well, I didn't think I should try this little thing with my students. And it was something easy they could apply without having to go research it and try and figure out something on their own. And so I felt like that was a positive piece of that ongoing job embedded professional learning. And then we're also prioritizing how we can build the capacity of our staff in understanding what those skills really are. The second category we said earlier was identifying the health of our system. So here is our K5 results. We've never seen a graph like this before. I'm going to tell you, explain what it's set up. So these are a percentage of students identified by tier on the Satchel Pulse screener. Blue is the fall and green is the winter. Tier one means that those are students who are currently meeting where the expectation would be. Tier two are students who might need a little bit more support. And then tier three would be those who we'd be definitely wanting to intervene on and pull small groups to help close some skill gaps. So you can see at the tier one level, overall, K5, and remember, teachers completed this survey for students. So it's their perception of where students are. In the fall, 35% of our students who took, who they were assessed, were in that tier one. And in the winter of this last time, 53%. So it did go up, and we're able to see some of that growth. You can see that tier two went down, which is why tier one went up. So from 57% living in tier two, down to 43%. And then at the tier three level, from 7% to 3%. And I want to make sure that I share accurately with you guys that our teachers do say that they're going to use this tool. And so while they're seeing success with it, and they're seeing these numbers go, they're better understanding how to use the rubric. And so today, they were talking about how they're excited next year to see if they would score kids the same way in the fall because it was the first time they had really used that, and how they get to better understand what those competencies are. Is it really students growing this much, or is it more about how am I scoring them? But they were definitely able to see how this data was growing. At the 612 level, it's the same setup here, and students self-rated themselves on this one. So at tier one in the fall, 56% were there, and in winter, it was 62%. Tier two, it was 43%, and then winter, 37%. And then tier three is 1%. We know that there is something we need to dig into with our students rating it, and we just have some questions. And some of our next steps might involve, are there some students within tier two, tier three that we might want to have our teachers actually provide a score for certain students to better understand? But you can see those numbers are shifting more to that positive trend as well. The third point that we had was it allows our building and teacher teams to use data to drive decisions. And so the pie chart on the right takes each of those five FCL competencies, and it breaks it down by the percent of those who took the survey, which was that representative group of some teachers, some social workers, some counselor, admin, MTSS facilitators I described earlier, and what they identified as the one that schools were using the most in their tier one FCL lessons. So you'll see 37% are focusing on relationship skills. And then that second biggest one is actually the red little chunk of the pie, and that's self-management. And then self-awareness is that blue color. And those are the top three that they're choosing to focus on. We did pull a couple quotes from the survey over because we could take, we want to take some hand-to-hand feedback as well into this. But some of that information is it helps us target our tier three and also inform us on what we could be focusing more on as a building and in classrooms for our tier one and tier two, tailoring lessons to classroom needs, still a work in progress by utilizing the classroom quick wins. It allows our team to catch up to students who we may not have been aware of needing extra support and to review what support's already in place for those whom we are intervening. And then it helps identify the greatest area of need or primary focus. That same survey was used to ask this question. So that first one was, what are we helping to focus on more at that tier one level? This one was, which competency is your school intervening in most often? And so overwhelmingly, it's self-management, 63%. So you'll see that. And then right under that is self-awareness. Right under it, but the next biggest one would be self-awareness. And so one of the questions that we have for moving forward is, if you go back to this slide, if we're saying at tier one, we're focusing so much on relationship skills currently and self-management is the second one, but we're saying we see a need for more intervention in self-management, we need to engage in our conversation around, do we need to put more self-management practice maybe into our tier one potentially? And so that's one of the questions that we're going through, utilizing this screener that will help us be able to align some of the support we're giving to students. We did pull a couple quotes from that survey as well over on the left side. But when it comes to interventions, that is typically done with small groups of students in groups of three to six-ish, right, that's what we're here? Students at a time. And you'll see that it, this quote says that having data helps us form our FCL groups and identify the FCL competencies that need to be addressed. It gives very specific data points for our students and target where they need extra support. Our tier two students who had three plus competencies and tier three were identified for intervention, and they're lowest area because we have many students who might have multiple areas they need to be working on based off of the screener, and so they kind of prioritize one. And then they did say, one of them said that all the students will provide an FCB intervention based on their lowest rating. And so we did ask the question to some of our staff of, were all the students that have been on your radar, did they come up in the red on this? And for the majority of them, they said yes, that probably 99% of students who are on the radar did come up in that tier three area. But then we asked the follow-up question of, were there other students that were, that came up that you were not on your radar? And that answer was yes as well. So we did find that while there are some students who have those externalizing behaviors that are showing up in our tier three and is intervening these interventions, we are also finding some students that were not on the radar that we are intervening with as well. The fifth category I had on that first slide was efficiently and accurately grouping students. And so we just asked a simple question of, is the Satchel Pulse data considered? Was deciding to refuse an FCL intervention? 83% said yes. 10% said these are our next steps. We have a little chunk saying, I'm not sure. And then 2% said no. And so I think that speaks to the fact that as we were going through a pilot and as we are beginning to leverage and utilize this screening tool over the next couple of years, we need to be able to develop some systems that ensure this is consistent. So on average, our schools have performed three to nine FCL intervention groups based off of what we asked for some information. The FCL intervention groups range from, I can't remember, one to three, four to six, oh, seven to nine students. And then those And then those groups do meet one to two times per week, and they're focused on building skills and one or more of those competencies. And then they are taught by our NPSF interventionists. Some of our instructional coaches actually take a couple of groups. And then our NPSF facilitators, based off of schedules. And then the sixth area was that ability to progress monitor the effectiveness of our intervention. Progress monitoring is super important with any type of screener, because if we identify a deficit or an area that we need to be working on, you want to be able to track that progress over time. So up top, it's, I think it's kind of hard to see with the coloring on there, but you'll see that this is one student's universal screener results over time. And so we took it, this student took it in the winter and the fall and also last spring. And so it's actually the most current is on the left for that student. And you can't really see those numbers from here, but that top of the overall skills, the most current one had a two-point-nine score. And the first time they took it was a four-point-two. So it did decrease overall. And then what we're able to do is monitor that progress, similar to what we do with literacy, where we give a screener three times a year. We do monitor students every couple of weeks whenever they are in an intervention and go ahead and assess them on those overall skills so that we can start to say, is this intervention working? Is it not? Do we need to change something? Do we need to maybe increase the time, change the group, change who the teacher is? So when it comes to some next steps, we are confident that this is a tool that we are able to use to better build out our social emotional learning system and our interventions. And so we are excited to have something to be able to have a screener to provide that data. But we know we have some next steps with it. And so ongoing data analysis is one of them. We are just getting, dipping our toes into this. And as, after three times of trying it, you can't, it's really hard to set some trend lines. You know, you've got to have more data points before you can make a really informed decision. And so we're, we're excited to continue to leverage that, to be able to help make those decisions and make sure that they're even effectively informing our instructional strategies. We have some prioritized professional learning. We just sent out our professional learning needs survey, and we'll provide an update at our next board, bringing up some of that information with you guys. But something that keeps coming up is teachers want to understand some of our social emotional learning behaviors a little bit better. And so we know we need to continue to prioritize that, especially with how do they support us with our academic content? We have some next steps of some continued communication. So how can we refine our communication to staff and families so that they understand what the results are, what we do with those results, and how do we develop that two-way communication about that? And then that last area is we need to continue to gather stakeholder input. So we want to, as always, include opportunities for staff and students and families to give us some feedback on if this is helping, if it's not, what are things that we could do better. And so that would be one of our next steps for sure. And so with that, we'd love to open up for any questions that you may have. And Dr. Hoyu and Spears and myself might jump in with some answers.
Thank you. Very, very thorough.
Yeah.
I remember when we first were discussing bringing this on, and we realized that the perspective of the screener from the staff, from, from the teacher perspective was important as well as the students. Was there any further continuation about bringing in the view from the parent's side to get that kind of full facet into, you know, this?
No. Yeah, good question. So what we've done, in order to get the parent perspective right now, when the results go out, we do have a link and/or, and also it's how they type the long URL, or the short URL, short tiny URL into the, into the browser. But if they choose to, then they can fill out that survey. And so we give the exact same questions from their perspective on all five competencies. But that's more of if they choose to.
Right.
We have not found out yet of being able to offer it at all.
Yeah, I think that'd be interesting to have that figured in there as well. And then the other part, does this follow the student throughout their, their life in, in the district or after, you know, they moved from middle school to, to high school? Is there some kind of ability for the system to show their next teacher or their, their next pod, you know, how they progress or where they're still needing help?
Yeah, great question. So actually, today at Martin, when we were at their school improvement meeting, one of our third grade teachers shared that it was nice to be able to see how the second grade teacher, what they scored their children on ahead of time. So it does follow throughout. The, if a student ever chose to opt out after we've done it, we can remove their data and it would be completely gone, obviously, from the system. And then it would wipe, wipe clean of everything. But it does go ahead and follow, which allows our teachers to see kind of how, what students are going to make the questions.
And is there, is there an overlay for children with IEPs that, that, you know, this may impact, you know? Or maybe it's something that could be discovered that some kind of IEP intervention needs to be made?
Yeah. So as we are going through this process with students who are in any, any type of intervention, as we're doing these FCB interventions, there might be students who don't show progress and they're not continuing to advance. And so we might need to layer in more support. And so from there, if they're not responding at that tier two level first, we go to a tier three. And if they're not responding at the tier three level, then we might need to go to a pop shop or opening up, you know, domains and FBA BIPs, which is a educational, a term for you. But that could lead to that, but it doesn't guarantee it. Because our goal would be to provide those proactive interventions so that we can help students successful at tier one level.
Okay. I just wanted to say that in the data that you showed, can you hear me?
Get real close.
That's close. In the data that Dr. McCrindall showed, so that, that data right there just shows that it does follow a student because it was like the very first time we took it, they were in one grade level and then moved, and then we've taken it twice since. But if you can back that bus up all the way, our students that, yeah, right there, came up in tier three, every one of our buildings have made sure that those students are tied into something. So some of our students that might receive social work right now are accounted in this too. So we're just making sure that everybody's kind of wrapped up into something that they need or some sort of supports. And I, I haven't heard yet that a, a school has discovered someone that they've missed, which I'm really grateful for, right? So yeah. I think that the tier two students, those are also students that we're trying to provide and figure out the right supports for.
Good. Thank you.
Dr. Hoyu, so you just said that some of the students, all students that receive special, did you say all students are receiving social?
Some of the students in that tier three there receive social work, but not all of them.
Not all of them.
Yep. But some might have an FBA BIP, some might just be on a regular, right, on a, like, class-wide plan, just depends on the need of the student.
So because this is a screener, there are students that have IEPs and those who don't who are all in that data, just like with our jar assessment, they're all in their IAR or with the FAT. And so in there, in our, I think our FAT data, those who are not needing that, the red color, that, that lower level, there are students in there who might have IEPs, who might be FTL, who might not have any of that, who might be in the intervention system, all within that category.
Right. I was just, I'm, I'm trying to think about how to phrase it. Are all children that are receiving social worker help included?
Mm-hmm. So anybody that, anyone is included in this?
Yeah, everybody would, everybody. So it, it would not be contingent on services.
Okay.
At all.
Right.
If a universal screener, so it would be provided for all students unless they're opted out.
Right.
And it would not be used as a diagnostic tool to, to determine eligibility for special education services because it really is a universal screener and not a tool we would use in, in special education to determine eligibility.
I think one of the things too, when we talk about the parent perspective, so having this, we have two to four percent, and I know that that can fluctuate from year to year, that parents have that option to opt out. Also, just like with our reading map, other academic interventions, if a student falls in a tier two or a tier three and is being recommended for an intervention, that would be discussed with the parent as well about, what did the data show? Here's what we would be recommending. And then they would have that ability to opt out of that intervention if, you know, if wanted at that time. We've seen that sometimes with our academic areas.
Yep.
Usually that had been, you know, when we were starting out things, but really making sure that the parent is involved in that next step as well. So there are different offerings too, if somebody was like, eh, maybe not bad, but what are some of these other interventions that you have?
Sure.
I also wanted to mention that even if a student has, or a family has opted out, it doesn't mean they can't access, right, something. If, if a parent should bring up a concern and said, oh, my gosh, my student's struggling right now, or that I heard from the teacher they're struggling, it still, right, all these, anything that a student would need to access, we'd of course, go.
Any other questions from the committee or board at all?
So this is, this is all the data or all the information that we've been able to obtain for the pilot that we approved. Pilot has ended? I mean, is the contract, then we need to determine contracts for ongoing?
So the way last February we approved this of the board was a three-year contract with the option to pull out after a year. So right now, if we showed that it was not being helpful, or we didn't find it to be successful or helpful, I guess that would be successful. So we are recommending to continue with that. So there is not a need to approve, because technically it was already approved for three years. But we wanted to make sure that we shared where we are with this, because we are at that one-year point, where if we showed that it was not something that was helpful to us, we could pull out of that contract at this time without any type of monetary, you know, kind of feeling.
I mean, I guess my, my big concern with this is, I'm, I'm still not seeing that there, this is not to say that, that this team hasn't done the due diligence that they need to do. I'm, I'm very impressed with how we've been able to kind of assimilate all this information. But I'm still not understanding the correlation. And I've given Satchel Pulse, like, show me the data that says we've implemented FCL and these behaviors have improved. Because going to the PTEC meeting a few weeks ago, we realized we've got all these behavior problems and that they're very much nestled in that middle school age bracket. And I haven't seen anything that says, by doing up the, the Satchel Pulse, we are able to start to do these, these behaviors. We're starting to see these behaviors trending down. As a matter of fact, we're starting to see them kind of trending up a little bit. So that's a concern to me. I, I do think that this is something that was really necessary after COVID, because behaviors were out of control and we definitely had issues with students trying to readjust themselves back into this learning environment. I don't know if this is really necessary anymore in this type of, of a setting. And I feel like we, we need such more of an, of, of impact on academics and trying to get our arms around those deficiencies, that this takes away that valuable learning time. And that's, that's just my opinion on, on this. I don't understand how this is complementing the competencies that we're trying to kind of shore up with our students. But that's, that's the only comment that I wanted to make.
And, and so is it possible to have an overlay in these areas that need more remediation or interventions as a result of, of these measurements and performance in academics? You could see how there are, you know, areas that if a, if a student has emotional issues, you know, interpersonal issues that can then be addressed by this, does it correlate, as I think Mrs. Wiley is saying, with improved academics? Or is this outside of the scope of our staff to, to fully make those things? It can be a handoff and a key for, for Paris to make that decision internally. But how much room do we have as, as our role?
So we, so we're, we're asking the same question that you're asking, of how does this actually impact our behaviors and then also our work habits for our students? To us, what I am most excited about this screener for is more about the self-management strategies that our kids are showing that we have deficits. Executive functioning is the, is the education word that would be used with that. What are those organizational skills, what are the things that we need to help our kids be successful in this world where they're not used to maybe having a planner and identifying those different parts? But we have looked at some of our behavior data, and because we haven't had this tool long enough to be able to connect and correlate it, we don't feel, I don't feel competent enough to say, because we have this and we did this yet, this is why those results aren't going down yet. And so that would be something we do want to track over the next, that ongoing data analysis part. We're going to want to track that. And we do want to go ahead and layer in, like you're saying, Mr. Thompson, the attendance piece to this, all those different parts. But because we've only given it three times to K-eight and then six twelve, you know, those two times, it's really hard to make a, this is the thing that's working, yes. And so it's just, it's new. So I understand what you're saying.
And, and, and I, understanding, we've only, I totally appreciate the fact that we've only had a year. There's no way that you can assess this information. But when I go back to Satchel Pulse and I say, show me the data from places that you've been for two, three, four years, they also have nothing to prove it. So that's a concern to me is that I don't want to continue to see us spending money. They're going to take our money. They, they, they have nothing against taking our money. But what, at what expense for our students, at what expense for our staff, at what expense for our administrators? I, I don't like throwing money for the hope that this is going to be able to provide information. And I'm very disappointed in the fact that Satchel Pulse as a company can't show me anything that says, we've had this for six years at a, at a school, and this is all of the data that shows how this is improving. They, they haven't been able to prove that to me either. And I just went ahead and tried to do that research on my own outside of you guys, because you have other priorities. But that, that's concerning to me. But I don't fault District 158 or, or you guys for not being able to accommodate all that information, because there's no way that you can in the year.
I appreciate that. I was going to add, the fact that I have this one thing, I, I happen to be able to meet with principals, Dr. McCrindall and I. And it's one feature I think I would highlight from just having conversations with building principals is that oftentimes when we're talking about behaviors we're seeing in the classroom, and we're talking about students in particular, and some of the skills we want to work on, as teachers, they're talking about maybe how they feel a student might be struggling and they're not quite sure where to, like, put their finger on something. And so I think one of the, one of the things, whether it's this tool or any tool, when we're talking about screeners, it can offer us some language that's a little bit more subjective, objective rather, than the subjective sort of, I feel like a student might be struggling with. And, and it just gives us a little bit more of some objective words and common terms to talk through that when we're going to problem solving meetings, or really talking about the same thing. So I just wanted to add that as sort of a, of, an advantage to having a universal tool, whether it's, you know, Satchel Pulse or any other tool, when we're having common language and common terms that are more subjective, sometimes it's easier to target things.
And I know, Dr. Hoyu, you and Spears have been to the majority of the data meetings that have been going on, both at the beginning of the year and some of those are going on. So right now for the, for mid-year, one of the things that was a takeaway for me from our school improvement meetings, as we talk about the various components, right, behavior is one of those goals that we have across all areas. And while we know that these are looking at different kind of learning habits, functioning, executive functioning skills, things like that, a piece that I've heard over and over and over from our staff, and again, it's not every staff member sitting in these meetings, is that there, we have certain tools that are at our disposal right now that we've tried. You know, if I tried everything that I could for Jessica, if something was a challenge for her in the classroom, that now we have a tool that's able to give other additional interventions or ideas that the teachers then can try. So while I know that one of the pieces that is hard to say, it's a little bit easier in the academic area, but when we, when we talk about behaviors and we see, to be able to say, it was this specific intervention or was that specific intervention, sometimes it's just maturity and kids getting older and those change. But because we have a number of different interventions that are happening, it's, I think it's hard for us to say, this is the one piece that changed this behavior, because so many things are happening at that time. But a piece that we didn't have in the past and that we're still exploring for some of our tier, tier three type behaviors are those interventions that are easy access for staff to be able to utilize in their classroom. And I think that this tool is giving them things where they're more comfortable being able to, hey, here's an idea, yeah, I can try that in my classroom, which was something I think they were a little skeptical at, that we heard at the beginning, right, from staff, what's this going to give me and how am I going to utilize this? Where there is more of a comfort level to that, are they a hundred percent comfortable? No, not that. But they're not a hundred, a hundred percent comfortable with our math yet, right? And they're, they're moving to, to those things. And I think that's the PD that you guys are talking about, where they're able to be able to, how do I use the rating scale? What does this mean and how can I target that into my classroom? And so I think those are some of the pluses that we're seeing that have been beneficial to our staff and then being able to utilize for our students. And so those are part of the reasons that we're looking at saying, hey, we do think we should continue moving forward with this, because we will have more data over the next few years that can dovetail with what we're doing with intervention for attendance and academics and all those things.
So maybe what we need is, is just a plan for an overview of a, an ROI after some time. So after we have enough data compiled, we can take a step back and say, how does this look from the FCL perspective? How does it look from the academic perspective? And measure that when we're like coming up upon a renewal or, or decision term for.
I, I am happy to report that, um, looking at our, our behavior data, um, to answer that portion. Over the past, um, four weeks, our incidents have reduced by half. I have no idea if that has, again, so many variables. Because sometimes a few students are making up a significant number of those incident events. So it's, it's hard to say the reason why, but that's exciting news to report, um, that coming back from a break, that's, that's pretty unheard of. To get back into the swing of things and, and to have half as many behavior incidents in the months back at school. Um, the other piece is that I, I also did ask Satchel Pulse over the past several months if they have any research that, that supports attendance, for example. And they do have an Illinois school that they're working with right now in a research study. And they're, they're yielding positive results from that study. A majority of, of companies like Satchel Pulse are going to hang their hat on the fact that they're capital aligned. And capital's really done a legwork with the research.
Right. And that's, that's what I keep getting from them. When I asked them, I said, well, we're aligned to capital. Well, that's an approach. That's not, not showing a correlation between this happening and this outcome.
So the, the screener in and of itself is just really screening for, do we have these skills available in our students? And then the capital competencies in and of themselves, those skills that we're, we're hoping students demonstrate are, are really the ones that are research-based. So if we build up those skills, that's where we see the, the bank, our buck and the yield and the positive attendance and, and the behaviors as a result. And that's really where capital's done their research. So it's having a screener in and of itself is really just helping us target the skills that we hope to see, um, making a positive impact on behavior and attendance. Rather than the, the screener in and of itself, you know, making that positive impact, if that makes sense. So it's really the instructional approach that we use as educators and how efficient we can be in targeting that instruction and grouping kids and monitoring them over time. That lets us do that work rather than trying to figure out who's who and, and what's the best way to target that instruction. So one of our middle school facilitators, um, had shared with me that we, we, you know, when I was asking her about implementation. She's sure that she's, they've been doing this for years, um, the, the instruction around these competencies. But it's really not for the first time that she feels like she's able to do that in an efficient manner. She's able to take that information and match it because it's capital aligned to capital-specific interventions that we have at our disposal. Group students efficiently and monitor their progress efficiently. So it's really not a matter of changing, um, the expectations around what we're teaching. It's, it's more about being able to do so efficiently, if that makes sense.
Can I just, three quick questions? When do we call a parent based on this survey? So if I get, I have a bad day and I enter, I fall into tier three. Parent gets a phone call?
Hi, I can answer for, uh, our middle schools right now. The, the student typically will get called in if they, they answer the questions really quickly or they have an rough go of it that day. Parents are communicated with when a student rises to that level of concern. Um, and again, it really makes a difference in what areas of that survey that they're showing concern in. Is it an organizational skill that this is? Is it something about communication or social awareness? So depending on, on where that child's needs are, I think that level of response rises to that, to the need. But when students are in that category, if you will, of tier three, um, parents are communicated with.
I mean, it sounds like if you go into the tier three within 30 minutes, six counselors come up to you and give you a hug. And how do you get out of that? Should you just answer the survey differently?
I, I, I guess anybody could, could answer that survey differently if they were concerned about how, how they were going to be responded to with that. But we're, I'm, I'm pretty confident in the, the way that our counselors and our facilitators are approaching kids with that. That, that's not going in a direction that would really impact our ability to serve them well.
Right. I, I guess I'm worried about the, the false negatives and the false positive responses from the survey of, okay, I answered this wrong. And now I'm getting all this intervention that maybe I didn't need because I just, I just kind of answered the survey on a bad day.
No, at the 612 level, because students are completing, are filling it out, they would want to then engage in a conversation with that student and make sure it was accurate, first of all. Because there is a whole, there is an element, I know we don't want to think about this, but some, some kids like to go Christmas tree, the, you know, fan try or just go and go straight down that level. I hope we don't do that, but you know, it, it might be there. And so we would want to engage in a conversation first with that student and be able then to assess it. And then there'd be conversations with their teachers. So are you seeing the same thing? Is there, are there sort of blocks apart before we jump to an intervention necessarily? And you don't jump right away to a tier three level. You go through a progression, that's what MTFS with you. So if you're a student that was not on the radar, we probably start by some conversations first of communicating with your family. What's going on, how, how is this going? We might layer in some other supports and, um, sometimes that works itself out on its own. And you don't need to go ahead and do a, a, you know, a social group. But you don't really jump from one to three really quickly. We try to go through a progression. Now, if it was a student that was obviously, um, we go meet with them and it's something, um, you know, unfortunately self-harm related or something that's a huge type of danger. We would jump right away to that, obviously, and be able to provide those supports. But typically we would go through a progression and we would want to check in, especially with our 612s because they're the ones pulling that out, that this was a legit type of score.
And, and Mr. Thompson's comment kind of drew me maybe in a different direction from where Mr. Thompson was going. So if you have this history of having these negative scores, how do you prevent the teachers from making a snap judgment? On, okay, this, this student may have some trouble instead of getting a fresh start, which you should get in the new year.
And I, I think that's one of those pieces that, um, having been a classroom teacher before, you get information, back in the day, we used to get a folder, right? And some may not look at that right away because they want to have that impression, um, to be able to sit with their new class and, and see where they're at after, you know, the summer, years of growth, whatnot. Others do look at that piece right there. But I think a lot of that is professional development. And whether that is behavioral data that's moving forward, it's attendance data that's moving forward, it's academic. It does help paint a picture of where that student was to where they are today. So I think that is a piece that we do share that, you know, just because this was in the second grade, they're now a fifth grade. What has, what has worked for the student? Communication with the parents, um, with previous teachers, so they could see that growth of where they are today. It shouldn't just be just because they were here, here's where they're starting. It is that fresh start, but I understand your question's going from there. That it's, uh, just because I see this, and am I assuming that's going to happen to that? I mean, this is just a different way of information being shared from one way to the other. We were talking about worksheets in the past, which gave some information about the levels where students were. This is now electronic on that. So I think it is really that professional development about, um, the student, what does that mean? And how do we utilize that information from year to year? But all of this is discussed on an annual basis, three times a year in our data meetings anyway. So I get, again, I think it's those robust discussions about that. Just because it says something that's one data point and there's so many more pieces that define who that student is.
Absolutely. I wanted to add, Mr. Lombard, with Stoic and CHAMP of our framework, a part of that is building relationships with kids. And so for most students, if, if you go back to those, um, where we're at, at the 612 level, 1% being in that tier three. Most of our students are at that tier one, tier two level. We're not going to jump in right away and do interventions. You're going to, kids might have matured. They might have learned some new things. They might have all of a sudden figured out how to align themselves better over summer. And so we're not going to jump right away to doing those interventions. We're going to give some time. Now, if you're a tier three student who's been getting, receiving some support, we'll probably keep layering in something. We don't want to have a gap in that, um, that's what we're getting given. But that's something with CHAMP and Stoic really does that really well. And so next year, we're starting our professional learning and also the spring, we're going to be to layer in that idea of, don't let this be the thing that, um, you know, that, that hates the kid's reputation or whatever before they come in. So if I drop that, we definitely make sure we hit that.
And then just the last one, I know that there was an article in The Voice about this. Do you guys follow up at all with some of those students who have reflected in that article?
Yeah, we were.
Yeah, I, um, I think, I'm not sure that the timing of that article was, was, they may have been talking about a different survey in addition. The five essentials. So, uh, it, I, I think there is a little bit more detective work to do, um, around that. But they, the, there was a lot of reference to a different survey. But the, the student awareness of what's the purpose of this survey and how are we using this information? And what's the point from the student perspective? We did create a video, um, Anisby Deck for Kids that we pushed out. And also teachers had utilized during their way away lesson. So students had a very clear understanding at the forefront of what the purpose of that was before they engaged in it. So we do feel really confident in the delivery of that. But we were scratching our heads a bit at the article and realized upon reading it further that it, it did maybe go back and forth with that five essential.
Okay, fair point. Thank you.
I got a question. As far as, is this still a recommendation still for the, from the state as far as the FCL standard? Is this still just a recommendation, it's not a absolute, a district need to do this?
Nothing has changed from that side of the floor.
So if we're filling the FCL standard, this isn't totally like disqualified that's filling those standards, doing this survey. Am I correct in saying that or no?
Um, so teaching the standards, we have to then make sure that we have it in our instruction. Assessing it, this would, if they ever required it, this would fill that, that requirement.
But we fill our requirement without doing it too.
Correct. So we're remaining ahead of need based off of what we feel to help our MTFS with, um, with the flow of students.
And then, um, as far as Mr. Bittman, when he noted, like, like you said, filling in, you know, like, just a random, you're like, okay. Now, does that survey, um, results go away? Because, I mean, that could be like, oh, this is, we got a tier three going on here. Do you remove that?
Yeah.
And do it again?
You can always manually, uh, yeah, move a student from one tier to the next. And really the, the tier in and of itself doesn't mean anything unless you're attaching it to the support the child receives. Well, however, however, if in the, is that we're asking if in the.
No. And you can't, you know, if the results are going to be taken away. Cause, cause that can be like, oh, wow, they have really improved. Did we remove that one? That was just a, just a funny.
Like outliers?
Oh, yeah, we, we can, um, ask them to remove outliers for us if, if needed. And if we feel like that we want to adjust their tier placement, we can absolutely do that. So if there's, if there's data in there that's looking wonky, just like you might redo in a role reading fluency passage. Because if the passage was wonky or the student was ill that day and not doing well. I mean, there's always going to be an outlier that we don't want to fall down the data in our ability to analyze it.
All right. And then as far as, I know you mentioned, uh, Dr. Michael, about wiping the data clean if a parent asks that. Now, is that through us or is that through Satchel Pulse? So I feel like, I, I don't know. I, I still go back to the, I don't like the digital past, past, past views on children.
So Satchel Pulse, we share data with them. So we have, um, so when students opt out of our form, we work with technology very closely, um, actually Mr. Cundy of the technology. And he goes by and hand by hand removes us from being able to share our data with Satchel Pulse. So if we wanted to wipe clean a student, we would ask them to delete Laura Murray from the system. But then we would also make sure from technology standpoint, we removed them, that student you from the data sharing, just like we do with all those students that are opting out. So we've done, we do a triple check because we want to make sure, um, we can also hide students, but we wanted to just not even share that name with them. Because we didn't want there to mistakenly have a 612 student have the survey show up on their screen. And so we're trying to be very, very careful on which names we're doing. And so thank you to our tech department for that. I know it's an actual step, but we really want to make sure that we're protecting, um, the rights of what our parents want for their child.
And that can happen within like two minutes. I sent a request for an opt-out and the student's been removed completely from the system, including all of their data. Like they don't exist on the platform.
So it's, so it won't show up that it's like, you know, Laura Murray opted out and didn't take it. So, you know, just my name won't even exist.
Right, right. Yeah. So your name, so you chose, you opted out, you're in my class and your name doesn't show up on my roster at all.
Is there any way we could, when, when a parent opts out? I think it'd be maybe valuable information as far as, like, you're asking the parents that opted in, not opted in, didn't opt out. And you're getting that information. Can we get information on the parents that opted out and have a little line in that Google Doc that they're saying, why are you doing this? I'd like to know that. Because, I mean, some may answer that honestly, or maybe some not answer at all. You don't have to. I just thought that'd just be interesting as a, just a.
Yeah, we can add a, you won't make it required because some of them are lucky, we don't need it open and we can definitely.
For sure.
That's going to be another.
Yeah.
If they don't, or if they don't, if it's open-ended, yeah.
Because that's another listening window to, or to many as far as like, oh, that may be a problem.
Here's our line for those.
I mean, so that was 300 students that opted out or around there. Yeah. So. Thank you. And I wanted to, yeah, I did, I kind of all over the place. I wrote some notes beforehand. So I'm like, um, I was just wondering, because I went over some success stories on Satchel Pulse. And I wanted to hear a couple of superintendents, I listened to them. And, and what they spoke most, mostly, and all the little quotes that people, other teachers or whatnot on there. They just talked about the library of support that they can go to. And so nowhere did I see on there like, oh my gosh, our referral went down. Oh, you, you know, no quantifiable data. I, I guess that's what I have a hard time with because it's like, did our district know? Not know, but is all these things that we're getting from Satchel Pulse something that our district could not figure out without this? Is this such a need we can't function without it? Do we need to dump so much money into something that if, is, is, is a quantifiable answer? By looking at a student being like, oh, your organizational skills have really improved. It's because of Satchel Pulse. Or we're going to dump in more educational techniques or skills, like you said in the high schools, like, oh, we need this. Is that for every student? Not necessarily. Cause I mean, now they're going to do that in the entire class, but let's just say 30 kids. Is just one needed? Or, you know, or like, I'd love to hear a success story on a tier three that moved to a tier two. Do we have any of those examples? Yeah, like, that's what, we need to get behind those. That's what I want to hear. Like right now as it is, I don't, I'm not on board on this still. And so like that, it, but I'm willing to have a conversation for sure. And it's just, in like the pie chart, like is that, how many students were, or how many entries were included in that? Is every teacher active doing this? Is that 100% of our staff doing that as well? And so those are all good, I mean, indicators of like, oh, this pie chart looks great. I mean, these all look fancy and, you know, a lot of work for sure. I'm, I'm not to mention that at all. So don't hear that. But I'm like, I just have these questions came up like, okay, how does, how are we putting that benchmark of like, we're here? We want to be here. Our district was way down here. The rest of the similar schools were way up here. We need to get up here. I don't feel Huntley had that problem. But I'm not a teacher, but I want to ask those things. Because I really feel, because I dug into another school district in Rockford and they have been tackling this for like over 10 years. And Huntley came up way ahead of them. This was two years ago, as far as like an equity journey and this and that. And I was like, that was just interesting. And it was in this vein of social emotional learning and we were way ahead. So I'm like, where was that need identified? You know what I mean? So.
So I, I just want to address two, I can address two parts here and then the others, then I'm going to point you to our next steps. But we agree that we need to, um, continue to get feedback from more, um, more stakeholders on this. The reason we chose Satchel Pulse originally in that first group, we looked at quite a few different screeners. And, um, there were screeners that assessed the same competencies, but they didn't have the bank of resources for educators. So one of the things we wanted to make sure that our teachers had was things to actually do. So I'm getting a data, what do I do next? And so can I have a, a bank of tools that I can point to? That they're not going off and searching for things on their own time or trying to go find things and, you know, going off Pinterest. And teacher paid teachers spending their own time, money trying to do that. We wanted to give them some tools that they could do. And so why we went with Satchel Pulse is because it had that bank plus the screener. And so Satchel Pulse is also a sphere of newer, um, I mean, a newer company. It's just like many of the FCL companies, if you look at all of them, they're all in the last, I mean, the competencies are newer. That states are prioritizing and selecting these like in the last 10 years, you know? And so that takes some kind of buildup. To your point about gathering stakeholder input, the surveys we showed here, what was the people who most use it? And so that was about 40, um, very fragile 40, um, teachers in those ones. But what we planned to do, or not teachers, teachers, social workers, um, admin, et cetera, each of our buildings, every building, every grade level was represented in there. But it was representative groups, so it wasn't everyone. So our next step would be now that we've given this, um, at the high school level both times, because they would have only been able to do it one time before. We want to gather feedback from all. We're going to go ahead and make sure we get input from staff on how are you using this? Now, our principals have been talking to staff at their different data meetings. They've been, um, being able to gather that input and overall they feel like it's positive, um, feedback from staff. So we want to make sure we continue to gather that on a broader level. So we hear you, but because it's still newer, we were trying to at least get some information from the people who use it the most first. And then anecdotal feedback from those that are, um, using it. Because right now, um, I would say our interventionists, our MTFS team, our social workers are really the ones digging deep into it. And the classroom teachers are looking at it more as, oh, here's a resource I could use tomorrow during my lesson to help support this. Versus how can I actually. use tomorrow during my lesson to help support this versus how can I actually dig into the data they use it yet? Which is understandable because it's the first time they're really using this tool. And so we maybe, we want to dive into that more.
So if Satchel Pulse knows that you cannot get any information in a year, why is a pilot for a year then? I mean, if, if there's no chance for you to get this data that we're asking, we have so many questions, I know I do, and I know Ms. Wiley, there's like.
Yeah, we, we actually were very unique in our request for like a cancel clause. So that's not something that they typically do, usually just sign a contract with them. And we, we pushed pretty hard for the, that clause to be in the contract to be able to cancel at this point in time in case it wasn't what we had expected as, as a tool. So because it's been meeting our needs as we had identified, we're happy to move forward with it. But we were, I think, pretty unique in our request to have that clause in the contract to be able to cancel.
Okay. So I guess I'm saying, we haven't even found out some quantifiable data as far as in a year, but they wanted to go less. And that's what a lot of the, the success stories, the superintendents were talking about, saying like, well, I don't have this and this, but it's great, you know, I got this source and this resource and whatnot that we can go to while all the teachers can have this library of support. So, but as far, I don't know, I just, I don't know, that was just swirling in my head like this is, I mean, I get it, you're only doing so many screeners and, I don't know.
Yeah, so the three, so that's why we went ahead and we want to do that three-year process of, we know it took us longer to be able to say this is really working, but we pushed hard on Satchel Pulse to get to achieve this rate we could for the first year because we felt like we weren't competent to say let's sign and go at the full rate of three years. But that's why, it takes at least three years to get to know anything, you know, with any of our assessment tools, even though it took a long, long time to start. And so that's a question.
Anything else from the board or the committee? Thank you for the presentation. Appreciate your time and your work. Moving on to seven, Special Education Committee, whoever's going to answer for Mrs. Wiley.
Laura, can you take care of this? We just started. They don't come with data.
Do you go ahead, Gil?
Mike, it's just very great, wanted to thank again the board and our community for the overwhelming support that occurred at our light open ribbon ceremony in the open house. It was just a phenomenal showing of support. Just wanted to publicly thank everyone again for their support. It was amazing. And then also wanted to report on the January 29 mental health fair that we promoted. Our department coordinated it with the Huntley Park District. We had over 60 vendors participating, collaborating on health and wellness resources in our community for all students and families. This wasn't designed to be for students in special education, it was for all families. And we had just a wonderful showing and just wanted to share with the board some feedback that the community vendors shared. They thought it was well planned and, and felt like it was well, that there was good participation and just wanted to share those positive comments. Jill Shadle's been really working hard around family engagement and has done some things that we're really proud of. And so just wanted to give you that update. And that's our question.
I would say applause to, sorry, I stepped out for a second, but applause to the light organization in that center opening up. It was wonderful to see so many people from across the community just enamored with what's going on there. So great job for you. I would say great job for everybody that was involved in the effort. I came on very late at the end, this was already in flight before I came on, but I was extremely proud to be part of, of the celebration. You guys should just be so very proud. And this shows the type of district initiative that we have, to be able to put something like that into place. I was somewhere working last week and the students from 300 came over and they had some students from their light-ish type of programs. And they were talking to me about 158 and how amazing that center is and how we've really set that bar so high. So this is what I love to see, is that as a district, we set the bar high and we have everybody else kind of chasing us now for that. So thank you so much to everybody that made this happen, all of you guys.
Thank you.
Awesome. Again, that I, I, I think the space is great. It was great to see the kids there and how happy they were in their, that space. And, you know, I remember when this all came up, started and to see the, the final product was a really, really great moment that night. So kudos to you. I don't think Fine Street has ever seen that many people partake in that stuff.
Yeah, so definitely not. That was, that was amazing. It was a great problem to have. And I think actually my favorite picture, you and I are humming. I think that, I just want to acknowledge that.
You're freaking me out.
It was a one for me. It was out of here.
Mr. Cudley?
Okay, we'll move on to finance. Rowmeyer, we have our monthly fiscal update.
Thank you very much. Just a few things to add on the monthly fiscal update, just a few things that didn't make the memo. A few months ago, during the property tax levy, we had talked about applying for the property tax relief grant. And that's a, a state grant of $50 million that the state sets aside on an annual basis. And historically, we have applied for that grant, but it is, is given to districts that have very high property tax rates. But it is important for us to continue to try to apply for that grant, to communicate to the community that while we're doing everything we can to try to offset your taxes, whether it's with the abatement dollars and the abatement resolutions that, that we pass typically on an annual basis, or it's applying for these types of grants. So I did want to make the board aware that they did notify the, the winners, if you will, of that grant. There were 143 districts that applied out of almost 900 districts statewide, but that tells you that most districts know that, well, I'm not going to, I'm not going to receive this, so why apply? We did apply and we ended up approximately on 85th on the list. Yeah, Jess, you have a different number. I read the math on that, it is 84th, 85th on the list. I gave you that number. But the top 34 that, that applied did receive that $50 million allocation. So I just wanted to bring that to the attention of the board. We did receive notification on that, but we will continue to do that on the, the community on an annual basis. The other thing I did want to bring the board up to speed on is our community solar project. If you've been on the Reed Road campus and you've driven around the campus, you might see some activity on the back 40, so to speak. So they are starting to drive pylons to begin to, to begin the process of setting up the racking for the, for the array. So that is a whole seam ahead and they do anticipate that in the middle of the summer, maybe middle of August, they should be flipping the switch on that community solar project. So we are now at the time where we're going to be working with our communications department to notify our taxing district, our residents, or the opportunity to subscribe to the community solar project, to receive anywhere from a 10 to 20% credit on their comm ed bill with essentially no strings attached. By subscribing, I do believe not only will you receive a $25 gift card, is that what I saw on the landing page? So that is, you know, obviously from Forefront Power and, and their sister company Solstice. But we are going to start to communicate and we're going to come up with a communication plan so that we can notify the community all at once about this great opportunity because it will fill up, right? We, we have more residences and more rental property in our taxing district than can subscribe for this project. So really, people will want to sign up. I would encourage anybody who lives in the community to sign up. This is why we did this. We did this for the community so that they can save on their electric bill, and we did it for us so that we will also yield approximately $40,000 of savings from, from subscribing as well to that community solar program on top of the additional dollars we're receiving for the 15 acres of essentially farm. So that's good news. So that project is up and running. We will keep the board apprised on future communications, but that will be forthcoming pretty soon here. So just wanted to let the board know the good news. Other than that, nothing else to communicate. I, I actually want to come back for one minute to the community solar. We all know that Forefront Power is our energy partner, especially when it comes to solar. And they were the, we orchestrated that deal with Forefront Power and they're seeing that project through to the end, but in the middle of this project, they sold to a company called Luminate. So Luminate and Forefront Power are working together and that was all part of the contract. They're working together to see this through and so we're still, almost on an every other week basis, we have meetings with Forefront Power and Luminate. But the reason I also bring this up is Forefront Power's sister company is Solstice. So when the communication does come out, you will see Solstice on that communication because they are the subscriber company for which Forefront Power uses to subscribe community solar up to the, to the residence. So I did want to point that out because if you see Solstice, you're going to wonder what that is and that's the sister company of Forefront Power. I'd be happy to answer any questions on anything on the fiscal update memo.
I got one question. Probably want to ask it, but I think needs to be asked. So the, the activity funds, there was the Winterfest deposit, is that gone? Who's that? And I'm not trying to put.
I, I would have to look into that. The Winterfest deposit is gone.
They were trying to put on a dance, it's great, trying to do that to fill in the void for winter. Sounds like it, everybody really wanted to go. And it looks like there was a deposit in there for about $11,000.
I believe I saw communication from the high school that we're going to be reaching out to those who bought tickets, if you will, for that to determine how that refund would look.
I think the reason the parents is fine, I'm just, it looked like we did something to a supplier for $11,000.
Oh, I gotcha.
Yeah, I would have to follow up with, with high school on that. I'm unaware.
I don't really want to ask it, but I mean, I, because I think the kids were trying to do something exciting and it just happened.
Fair question. Thank you.
Any question? Sorry. I had a question in regards to an item that you had in the general memo, the freeze on federal funds, how impactful is that to us?
Well, it would be very impactful if that would actually happen because we receive over $4 million a year through whether it's the idea grant, title money, national school loan, and all those other federal sources that we receive. But, you know, since that, since that came out, I do believe on February 3rd, that was rescinded. And so currently, we don't see that as a potential risk for federal funding that we are receiving.
Gotcha. Okay, thank you. I was just curious about the dollar amount in and of itself.
Yeah, in total, it's, it's, it's big dollars. But, but there was always a question about, you know, initially they thought Medicaid was part of it then, Medicaid wasn't part of it. And, you know, is the idea grant, title grants and all these other reimbursements, is that part of it? There was a lot of communication going back and forth that it was and it wasn't. And, and the good news is that while it was rescinded, it's, it's, we don't really have to worry about that at this point in time.
Thank you.
All right, move to eight point two is our payables. We have our purchase orders, AP items, impressed and dispersment. If you have any questions, concerns related to those items, that one we'll look forward to the board for approval. Eight point three is revenue and expenditures report. Rowmeyer?
Yeah, very, very.
Sorry about that. Very briefly, you do have the December six month ending financial executive summary report. If you look at the face of that report, you, you can just look over at the percentages and, and we are, we are tracking essentially on all line items inconsistent with prior year revenue collections and, and the, the way in which we incur expenses. So if you see the capital outlay is 72%, so the purchase services is 54%, those are always trending high this time of year because we profiled a lot of those types of expenses. On page two, you do have the health insurance. We have another big month, but, but if you do look at where, where we are trending and if we were to incur claims the exact same way we did for the first six months of the year, we'd end up at about 14.56 million, so slightly over the 14.2 million budget. So we'll continue to monitor that. You know, and sometimes claims are very cyclical, right? When, over the summer months, we typically in the month of August and September, we'll see large claim months come out of the pipeline because a lot of our staff are off and, and they're having procedures done and whatnot. And the same holds true for the month of December sometimes, meaning in the months of January, we, we sometimes see a big uptick in claims. So we have received some of those bills for January and we are seeing an uptick. And it's looking like it's more than 1.2, 1.3 million dollars. But then, then we see that pull off a little bit in February. So we're hoping, hoping to see a little bit of the same, but I do want to caution the board that January is typically a big month and it's looking like it will be a big month. So just wanted to let the board know that as well. Other than that, there's really no surprises in here. Revenues are consistent as expected from the state of Illinois, CCPRT and Medicaid. Normally we collect a little more than now, but if you do look at prior year to date, we're trending. That's, that's all backloaded now with the way in which HFS is funding Medicaid. That'll come in, come in primarily in the last quarter of the year. So we continue to trend with budgets. So I'd be happy to answer any questions you might have.
Question? Thank you for that update. Move to eight point four, which is our Performing Arts Center seating replacement. You've got some fine pictures in that.
Yeah, that's, you know, every time I, I've been at the high school the last two days and I, I took about a month off from, from, I wasn't at the high school for, since December. And when I went to the high school, I, I usually stopped by the Performing Arts Center and I talked to some of the lighting guys and whatnot over at the Performing Arts Center. And the seats are getting worse. And I asked Marcus, are the seats getting worse? And he said, yeah.
They don't get better.
They're getting harder. And, and so when fabric really dries out, it, it goes quick. You know, at that point in time, when I pulled this memo together, it was, you know, 40, 43% of the, the lower level seedings had damage to them or ripped fabric or cracked fabric. It's now probably upwards of 50 or 60%. So this can't come soon enough. So, so we are very pleased to present the seating replacement. We are working with H2I Group and Irwin Seating Company, they're, they're out of Michigan. They've been in business for 117 years versus, you know, the previous group we used was a, a group that, that went under unfortunately eight to 10 years ago. And, you know, Irwin has been doing this a really long time and, and the majority of the performing arts centers are utilizing them in the area. So that's good news. The other good news is we did kind of pressure test the cooperative pricing. Amia Cooperative is a cooperative we use on the O and M side, we've had very good success with them. And so we are insured that we have very competitive fit pricing and we're very pleased with the pricing that they have put forth for the installation, the removal, as well as obviously the new seating at $247,365. So this is a recommendation for the board to move forward with this. On the very last page, we did provide you a picture of what the new seating looks like.
I was going to ask, is that the?
Yeah, so that is the new seating and very similar to the old seating, but if you do look closely, you'll notice that the seat has now a black ribbon around it. So the seats will be a little more pronounced. I like them a lot better than what we currently have. A little more comfortable as well and they're, they're plastic on the bottom, so when they go up and down, they won't tingle, it'll be a lot softer and quieter in the Performing Arts Center too, when people are coming in, going. So a very, a high quality seat for sure.
Does the material is, I mean, different than the previous seats?
Well, it, it's a high-end fabric for sure. But, you know, the, the previous seats did last almost 20 years. Right? And, 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 and our Performing Arts Center versus a lot of other districts does get a lot of use, right? We do have kids in and out of, of that space. We use that space for classrooms, we use that space for teacher assemblies, we use that space for a lot of shows as well. You know, other performing arts centers, high school performing arts centers in the area, they don't do their middle school events there. They limit the amount of events in their space to maybe five or six per year, but we do upwards of 14, I think, 13 to 14 events per year. So that space is definitely seeing a lot of use over the years, which is good, good for our students, good for our community. And, and, and don't forget, we also had Willow Creek, Willow Creek in there on weekly basis. have a citizen. So we have a lot of things going on all the time over the years.
The, uh, the company that, I know you said that the prior company, Seating Concepts, was a Mexican-based company that went out of business and Irwin is the one that's manufacturing the seats. Are they also doing the installation?
They are.
And was Seating Concepts the one that did the installation previously? Or was it Irwin?
No, Seating Concepts.
Oh.
The company that went out of business.
Since they're out of business, we can't go back to them for warranty for the.
Correct warranty.
It would be, uh, warranty.
Yeah, it'd be out of warranty. And, and, and really we do have to remember, right? As I noted within the memo, uh, these seats are going to be installed appropriately with the anchored appropriately, the depth of the anchors and everything that comes along with it. So we should not have any seats falling away from the, from the risers, the cement risers moving forward.
That was, that was my question, making sure that they're going to be installed the right way.
Yeah. I guess I just have one question.
Sure.
It looks like there's just one bit.
Well, because we're using the Omni op cooperative, this is, yes, and we pressure tested that by reaching out to another member, vendor, who's not part of the cooperative, who had a much higher price. You're welcome.
I had a couple more questions. So this will be summer projects work?
Correct.
And are you concerned at all having more so? Any concrete remediation from the bolts that are there existing and anything that needs to be done to fit these back in?
No.
Not worried about concrete?
No. They're going to use the same bolt patterns, but probably have to dig them out or drill them out a little deeper to make it work.
Okay. That, when I saw the, the stuff that was in there, I was worried that.
Right.
Things were stripped or, or some kind of concrete work would need to be done, but.
And anything can happen during demo.
Right.
No guarantee there won't be any extra work included.
Yeah. Okay.
We're not, it wouldn't be.
Any change order. Oh, right. Understood. Thank you. Yeah, so the, the only thing I saw that's not included is the electrical hookup, there's some floor lighting.
Yeah, there is some additional electric hookup with Associated Electric. We have already had Associated out there to, to look at what they would need to do for this installation and it's about $5,000. So through the operations and maintenance department, we'll be part of that process, managing that process, working with Associated and covering that through the O and M repair budget.
The other question? Really? With, with, okay, we'll move this forward. Board meeting for approval. Go on that item. Eight point five is the photography service agreement amendment.
Sure. Um, we've got Mrs. Woods here too, just to figure any questions. She's worked heavily with our administration, our building committees on this. You recall last year, we had been in a long-term partnership with previous photo companies who most of the last few years had some customer service concerns, a lot of things, a lot of hiccups when they were at the schools, a lot of complaints that we were receiving from our customers, our parents. And so last year, um, after a committee, a large committee from all of the buildings worked, the recommendation was to bring on Empire Photography. Typically, we do three-year contracts. Last year being the first year, we brought forward a one-year contract request to the board. From there, I know Mrs. Woods, we've probably had a couple that we were aware of. There's our comments that got popped up. You immediately worked with the school and the families and Empire Photography. And then I say couple, I mean, less than on one hand of things that we were aware of. The feedback that you gathered from the buildings on just the customer service and the quality of things this year, we feel comfortable bringing forward a three-year contract to continue with Empire Photography. Again, having that continuity and consistency for families rather than switching from year to year, oh, you know, this company this year or whatnot. In looking at just some small changes with that, if prices did increase in the contract, they are guaranteeing that those prices would not be over what CPI would be for that year if they were going to be increasing those on an annual basis. And that, that, correct me if I'm wrong, there was that shipping fee that they did not add last year that is a typical component for families, but if they were going to have multiple orders in there, they wouldn't be charged the three students that they ordered. At the same time, they wouldn't be charged that shipping three different times. It would just be one component there. Was there any other highlights that we're not hitting on there with this contract?
We've added the high school graduation.
I think they jumped in for us last minute, last year. There was cancellation for an emergency and they did step in. We talked about little things where, I know we were a little tight on the, the stage, if you will, and then halfway through we realized we were down a width of part of the stage. And so I didn't know if the photographers were in a different location, but Mrs. Kish, they will work with them to, to make sure we've got a little room and, and as they're taking photos, that they are able to get a good shot of their, of the children or the graduates getting their diplomas and whatnot for the family. So, yeah, forgot about that part of that, but that is great. That, again, another consistent component, one, one, almost a one-stop shop for the families with the school photos. Any questions?
Yeah. The, the shipping fee, that for every order or do they not give them in the classrooms anymore? You know, like maybe a whole, but you know, as far as like, oh, you just, you know, you take pictures and you get them.
I have the same question. So.
We've heard a lot of them. Last year, the committee decided, sort of consensus, probably, that they wanted all the photos females home. And this was primarily at the elementary level. The reason behind that was because parents were complaining that they were getting their, their student photos home and they had been shoved in backpacks and folded and bended and, you know, that kind of thing. So all of the photo packets are mailed. And like Ms. Lombard said, for the current school year, Empire did not charge that shipping fee, but they would like to charge it next year. And if you order more than, let's say for one student, you know, the single transaction, you're only charged $4.95. So it's not $4.95 for Lori's order, $4.95 for Amanda's order for Lori, you know, that kind of thing.
But they're never at the same time though, are they? Like my house.
You can, you can order all at once.
Was that something, I mean, maybe this isn't that big a deal, but I was just thinking, can parents just check that they want to ship then?
We did talk about that, but then again, we ran into the same problem of having some parents have their pictures sent to the school and then, you know, just, just a lot of confusion with that.
I think that's something as we go forward this next year, I mean, we could figure out a way that we can gather some feedback from families on that shipping versus being sent to, you know, sent to the school piece of that. But when Lori made, you know, big comment on that, I thought, oh, yeah, I have pulled up a few wrinkly, yeah, pictures out of backpacks before.
Totally. So, I mean, even a change would be like, parents, you can pick them up at the high school. We don't, we're not going to, we're not high school. You can pick them up in the office. I mean, that's just maybe a lot of work, but it's five bucks, it's five bucks.
Yeah. And, and they did keep the photo packet pricing the same, so we're not including an increase on that plus shipping fee.
Real quick, I have, there were a lot of people talking about this and I don't know how many people previously actually did complain about this. You're saying we did not get any actual confirmation?
No, I, I bet we probably got maybe five and we think that we were able to fix right away.
And then just, I was just scanning through it again. We don't normally, I don't personally buy these pictures, so I don't really know, but I noticed that the, the underclassmen had a digital option, but it looked like the senior did not have the ability to buy the digital photos. Did I misunderstand that?
That's a good question.
I, I would think that in this day and age, people would want a digital.
I do believe it's, it's also available for the.
Maybe I, I might have missed it, but I, I think that almost, I would think that's even.
I can, I can double check that and.
And then do we do anything with the commission money and the grant money specific? Is it targeted towards anything or is it going to the general fund?
We used to have a photo fund. Mr. Altmeier, it now goes, we do not have that photo fund for building anymore.
No, we do not.
It goes to the general.
Do believe, yes. Is that right?
It goes to their building budget.
To their bill, right.
To their building budget.
Yeah, so to spend that money, yeah. But we used to just have a photo account and I believe.
Right, it's not right, it's not, it's not one correct.
Yeah.
But it's in the general fund per building.
Right. All right. So we'll go ahead and move that forward for the regular board meeting possible. Thank you.
Okay. Eight point six, we have new development impact fees. Mr. Bittman had requested that we have a discussion around some of the new developments picked up in the area and just maybe have a bit of a discussion related to impact fees, maybe a little educational piece and making, again, many of the board members aren't overly familiar with the history, how that works, what they can be used for, just things that surround that specific item. I know Mr. Bittman wanted to, he put out a memo, kind of requesting it, maybe we should be requesting the villages to possibly ask for more, that type of thing. So I, I would just like to have, I'm going to let Mr. Bittman lead and let him, you know, explain his thoughts on it. But again, I'm more of the opinion right now that there's a lot of information that we're in the process of gathering. I mean, we have a demographer, right, working on some stuff right now. I think we need to, what we've done in the past is we've met with the village, various villages as, you know, either like the board president and the superintendent would meet, have discussions and openly we would set up joint meetings with the village. In the past, we haven't done that since COVID, but we'd have joint meetings and they would give us an idea of what the developments were like and what was going on and we'd give them an idea of what we had going on, what our capacities in our building or things of that nature. So, so again, I, I wanted this to be more of a discussion around educating ourselves on this a bit and, and, you know, we'll, we'll decide as a committee here if we got any action possibly taken, but personally the action should probably be a little bit premature without enough information and without other discussions occurring, but it's good to have the discussion here between us just so that we, you know, gain an understanding of what our impact fees and what they can be used for and that type of thing.
Thanks, Mr. Carvall. So just the, the background on this, but the goal of this is really should, does the board feel we should encourage the villages to increase these fees? If so, how should we present it to them and what should be presented, if anything? Because we can't, I, I wouldn't feel right going to the villages on my own. We need to talk about it as a board to make sure we have an understanding of what we should be suggesting of it. But the genesis of this is that there was a public comment in December at the levy hearing that described that the fees haven't changed for a while. Then there was a, recently there was an article about another 300 houses that are going to be built up in Huntley and that there was a lot of chatter and discussion about that of, we're going to need a new high school, we need to do all these different things. A lot of people saying that the development will make my taxes go up, but there's comments about the high school is already packed too tight and high school. I don't personally believe that, but, and then people talk about the traffic at the high school, on Main Street, on 47, all these different things come out of that. And the, so I asked Mr. Altmeier to, to kind of say, hey, have these fees really not changed? And I believe Mr. Altmeier came back and said, well, about when you haven't changed since 2003, twenty-two years. We've had a little bit of inflation since 2003 and I think Huntley turned to me back in 2018, but you didn't think they had been changed for a while. I don't know if we know when they've actually changed. We do get money on these, but if, but if they haven't changed for 20 years, I think that should be examined. I, I think we should get something like that. So the perfect example of, we just went through the performing arts center, right? There are capital funds that we can use this for to help with that for getting new buildings. There are things like the paving that we're going to talk about in a few minutes that is a big expense that continues to come from the new buildings we have. If we're not building the buildings, getting these impact fees or transition fees is helpful. So that's, and I'll just point, it's not us, but the, the Park District just had a referendum for additional funding. They have the same issue that we do with the impact fees. Maybe they didn't need that referendum if those fees had kept up with this and wouldn't have had to go through a referendum to get fees for the parks again. Not our area, that's the park district's area. So, and, and just additional thoughts, I like the idea of sitting down with the villages because, you know, one of the biggest, I just had this conversation in the airport today, which is, yeah, the traffic at the high school is terrible. We had three students in Project Leave the Way last year do a traffic analysis of how to kind of fix that problem. It was really well done and maybe these are the things, if they continue to fill up more and more houses around here, we should be pushing to solve problems like that because it is an issue for our district that you have to wait 40 minutes to get in and get out of the high school because of where it was put in the building. So again, a little bit off topic, but something there. So that, that's kind of where I'm at is what does the board want to do with these impact fee transition fees? Should have a conversation with the, the different villages and kind of encourage them to give us something more. We cannot tell them to do it.
No, right. It's, it's, and again, let's, let's define some terms and utilizations and things like that, so everybody is on the same page. So, Mr. Altmeier, if you want to do a little bit, I mean, I can do some of it, but if you want to.
Yeah, yeah, I can do that. So, so we received two different fees from the, the various villages and so everybody knows, the majority of our fees that we receive are from Huntley and Algonquin. Historically, you know, until recently, we really haven't received a lot from Algonquin. It's really all been Huntley, Talamoor and some of these other developments that we have. But with the two most recent developments that we do have across the street on our, for instance, with Algonquin, we are starting to receive more and more impact and transition fees from Algonquin. So that's first. Let's define what an impact fee is versus a transition fee. Impact fees are one-time levies that says, I'm just going to read this, on developers, okay, during the permitting approval process, revenues generated from impact fees are normally used for all investments in specific facilities such as roads, parks, park utilities, school districts, libraries, et cetera, et cetera. And recipients of those impact fees may vary from one municipality to the other. Not every municipality embraces impact fees, okay? And I think that's also important to note because there are a lot, within the news over the last 16 or 17 years, there has been a lot of villages and communities surrounding us that no longer charge impact fees because as villages and communities are trying to attract developers to get heads in bed, so to speak, right? Bring, bring more residential homes into their area. It, it's a cost. It's a cost to the developers that they generally, sometimes upwards of 10 or 12, $15,000 per permit that the developers have to pay before they even break ground, right? They just pull the permit and they have to start paying these fees. And, and generally that is always being passed on to the residential homeowner, right? It's, it's baked into the cost of the home. So, so if, if a community is looking to keep, you know, home prices at, you know, a certain range, $350,000 for instance, but they want to charge a $10,000, $15,000 impact fee, that will raise the price of the home. So a lot of villages make the decision that they're no longer going to collect impact fees and that they're going to try to work around it, right? So an impact fee is used for those purposes, right? Capital construction, to approve buildings.
Land acquisition.
Land acquisition, right? Generally, you'll, you'll see it, like we saw, we saw a lot of it in the early days when we went from a few buildings to the nine that we have today, right? But we now have a, a foundation of our buildings, but now we have to maintain those buildings, right? So Huntley has agreed to continue to, to, to provide us those impact fees because we do have to maintain a large amount of buildings. The risk is always that a city or a community may go away from charging impact fees. That's really not our decision, that is the village or its decision to make, which is why I think it's so important that we do meet with the village and we meet with the board and, right? And we talk about what our needs are as well. So I do understand that. Transition fees on our, on the other hand, I think we all know, we live in Illinois and we pay property taxes and arrears. It's why we do, do the 2020 core levy and you're paying the. It's why we do, do the twenty-twenty core levy and you're paying the twenty-twenty-four property taxes in the year of twenty-twenty-five. So that when a new family moves into one of these new homes, a transition fee is specifically would go to the school district to cover that first year of, well, no property tax revenue coming in on that home. It, it, it doesn't replace the whole fee, that's for darn sure. It's a much, usually a much smaller fee of a couple thousand dollars, but it's something, um, that the school district would receive on that one residential home to offset that cost of the first year because property taxes are, are in arrears. Those fees can be used on anything. Those fees go into the general fund and could be used to support anything we would like to use it for. Um, so there's kind of a big difference on how we could use those fees. Back to impact fees, we could use them, we could use them for road replacement, we could use them for, uh, a, a replacement. We could use that money, and we have in the past, for, for future abatements, debt abatements. Um, so, there, there is some flexibility at the impact fee side as to what we can use that for. We can absolutely use it for the things we can use it for. We have plenty of uses on the own hub side, um, for which we could use those funds. Historically, here at our district, those fees were very important because we did a two thousand and six Marlowe addition and we did not fund that through the property taxes. We funded that through debt certificates. And so, uh, we structured that debt to, to really match the impact fees coming in so that we had the money in our funds at sixty accounts so that when that debt payment came due, we had enough funds in that account, uh, in that fund to, to pay that off. And, and as you know, we just finished paying off that two, uh, two thousand and six series debt, which became two thousand and fifteen, nineteen, et cetera.
That's a three.
But we ended up finishing, uh, paying that off this past year, so, uh, that's a good news.
Yeah.
Mr. Altmeier, can I ask, you know, we, we.
Lot of information.
Yeah, you talked about the impact fees in the three major, um, uh, villages, Lake and the Hills, Algonquin, Huntley. Um, we know that we have neighborhoods, um, we've got, uh, been built out in Hampshire, Lake with the crossings. We know that there's a portion here in Gilbert's that has not started to tap into, um, our school district yet, but that back half of that neighborhood, um, would be then with Gilbert's. Um, we've got the, um, parts of Union, the unincorporated Huntley areas, which I would assume then would be County. So, um, with villages, right, so it shouldn't just be conversations, we just, um, have sit downs to talk about impacts of the building that's going on there. When I think about, um, that west of forty-seven, a lot of that's gonna be an unincorporated area down the line where there is, uh, openly, as that can be developed. Um, impact fees from any of those, um, villages or is it just our three and portions from the county?
Currently, we only receive impact fees from Algonquin and Huntley. Uh, we, on occasion, we will receive something from Lake and the Hills, but it's, it's one of these, two of these here and there that we've received. Uh, but nothing over the last two years from Lake and the Hills.
Yeah, I mean, and, and again, the brief history of this is, Lake and the Hills, at one point, had fifty percent of our students came from Lake and the Hills, probably twelve, fifteen years ago. Um, they virtually contributed nothing in, in impact fees.
Correct.
District. When Huntley started to build out, Huntley, I can tell you, stepped up big time, um, and made development pay for, you know, it, you know, what we needed to, do to be able to accommodate all the people and students that were coming. Um, and so, I, it's got, Huntley has always been way ahead of the curve on, on this, um, from my standpoint. They, pretty much, they invented transition fees, okay? I mean, I don't know that there's any, that there's, I don't know that there are many communities that have such a thing, but they came up with the idea, uh, when they were doing fourteen, fifteen hundred permits a year, uh, back, uh, pre-two thousand and seven, eight, back in, you know, ninety-eight through, uh, two thousand and five-ish, where it, it had this enormous, enormous amount of permits happening and this influx of, of kids just flooding in and we had that large lag in property taxes and that was a way to accommodate. So, like I said, they've always stepped up, um, big time, I mean, uh, in, in regards to all of this. So, um, I, I, I think, like I said, if, if you just have an initial conversation and then, um, I, like I said, yeah, it does need to be a board type of thing, but I, I think it's, you do, you go back to having these, um, joint board meetings um, so that, uh, that, you know, you, you can hear what the whole, you know, village and its board has to say and then they can hear what our, you know, district and our board has to say. Um, and, and you can have a discussion around this type of stuff with, you know, with solid data, um, to back it up. Because, a- again, this stuff has to, I mean, there are requirements that it has to meet, you know, the criteria is, there has to be a need. I mean, you know, a quantifiable need for, you have to sign off with the village of Algonquin, everything they give you, uh, the impact. And so, um, that need, um, you need to, I mean, they, they kind of need to understand it, um, if, if you're wanting them to recalibrate, um, these fees. I, I'll be honest with you, I, I don't, I don't think just because the prices of things have gone up that, that automatically means impact fees, um, uh, need to be going up CPI. That's not, th- those two don't correlate, okay? What correlates is what is our specific need, okay? And, and what types of developments do they have? What are the volumes of developments that are occurring? And then it, you know, it gets calibrated along those lines. Um, and the transition fees, uh, yeah, there's, I mean, you, you can try and, that's why you need a demographer to give you an idea of what you expect to have, is that, you know, coming in. We, we have a school district that, the reality is, we have pretty much, the buildings we're probably gonna need for the next ten years or more, uh, barring any massive, uh, building that goes out. Where we've seen a decline in our enrollment and we have capacities. We have, uh, some of our elementary schools are probably just fifty percent occupied right now.
Mr. Carvall, and I think we are about halfway done with Wolf, Wolf, um, coming in and doing the tours. We have a cabinet member and, um, the building administrator walking through, having those discussions so that we'll also have that capacity study, um, as well, that can tie in with what the demographer shows. And I think that would be some good data.
Yeah.
That we'd have to be able to sit down, um, whether it be in that joint, uh, board meeting or, you know, in a small group. It's been a number of years, um, that I know, uh, that, uh, anybody has been, that's one, that we've done the board meeting, the joint board meeting. But two, um, the village started inviting me, um, this full year to sit down to their, um, they meet twice a month for their building development, um, because of Swinter, thanks for slowing down, I haven't, uh, been, uh, attending those, um, as much. But it is there, the conversation about, um, the things that are on the works in the building, what's been in the plan stages, what's in the, you know, the, the draft, all of those components. And so having, you know, some of those discussions, the, the three hundred homes that, that are coming behind Walmart, um, I don't call them a year, but I wanna say that that was, um, uh, something that had been proposed within the early two thousand, two thousand and seven, it's, it's our wives.
And that's what I was gonna say, is, you gotta understand, you know, development, a lot, some of these developments that are being, that have been developed and have, you see homes in the last three, five years, this thing's around the books fifteen years ago, twenty years ago.
Does that mean we are receiving the impact?
It could mean there are rates of tax, of permits on them.
So, right.
And, and they're, on each development had a little bit of a difference, like that cider grow, I mean, they had, when, when they platted it, they did the plats, they had to pay us for the whole, whatever, if there was forty homes in a, you know, phase one, they had to pay us all at one time. Some are by, by units, pulling permits. So, they, each of these things have slightly different characteristics as far as how they fund.
And they did, I, I believe that, um, the original was over four hundred homes that were gonna be in that area. Um, now it's, uh, come back, um, and it's actually going to be around that three hundred. So, they dropped that considerably, um, in looking at, um, the homes and the impact, uh, that would, would be there. So, all that agreement, I can get an exact year on that, it's been a, a number of years ago with that piece. But I know that, uh, you know, the village is looking at that and the impact that it would have on the school district and, you know, our, or going back to developers with some of those questions. And so that did change, I mean, that's about twenty-five percent, um, did, um, reduction in the number of homes there as well.
Density, yeah, yeah, so this, uh, like I said, it's been, it's often, it's been so, you know, got, really, you know, put the brakes on. I gotta be honest with you, I, I have a hard time, you know, I, I don't even know if they've even, you know, how many new projects in the last five years they've actually kind of engaged in. And I don't know if they're just backfilling old ones predominantly, and that, and that's why I think you got, you gotta meet and, and, and get a better understanding from the village of, of, of where these things are because time, the, the time lapse has been significant over, uh, when some of this stuff was originally approved and developed and what they've got going forward here. So, again, so you know that type of stuff, so.
Clarifying, the chart that you sent me for Huntley, he says that they give us transition fees. Is the chart, does that include the transition fees or is that just?
No, Huntley, um, Huntley, back in two thousand and sixteen, seventeen timeframe, uh, stopped issuing transition.
So, they no longer give us?
Yeah, they only have impact fees whereas Algonquin still, we still have a portion of what we received as being transitioned.
And, and I guess, uh, sitting here, I mean, obviously as a taxpayer, a home, a property taxpayer, it frustrates me personally, but sitting here on the board, looking at all the developments, what I think people need to understand is that when you're building these four or five bedroom houses, um, everybody else's taxes are going up because of it. There's something coming in with two or three cents, which is an impact of forty-five thousand dollars a year. And they're not paying forty-five thousand dollars a year to make this your property taxes.
And see, that, that's, that's what I'm gonna tell you, I don't, I don't know that I agree with it. I think, I think just the opposite's happening. And what, what I can tell you for a fact is, the more homes you get on there, the, like, the bond, um, amount of our levy is fixed. We know we, completely fixed because we just fixed it for the next fifteen years, basically, okay? So, the more EAV you end up adding on, on that element, it's driving your tax rate down because there's more people to share that fixed amount, okay? So, that piece, I know for sure that that goes down, all right? What, what is up for debate is, would be, um, again, we, we use this, it costs us fifteen grand, you know, average per pupil spending, okay? But you add on, right now, we're, we're at such a big level of what we, okay? I don't know that it depend, it, it just would depend on the pace at which the new students came in and how the enrollment increased. But there's an argument that you would start driving down your, your, your cost per student, okay? Uh, because we would probably be able to absorb eighty-five percent of the cost. There's probably only about fifteen percent of that would be variable, um, in, in that circumstance. So, with the right level of growth, which we probably need a little bit of growth to help, you know, utilize everything to its best capacity, um, I, I think you actually end up driving down, um, the average cost per student. And, uh, I, I, I think there's an opportunity where, I, I don't think you will be driving up, um, our, our taxpayer costs, to be honest with you. But it's, it's not that it can't happen, but I don't think in our circumstance that it would happen unless it got accelerated, the growth got accelerated.
Right, I, I think that would actually get a good model put together to understand what the incremental cost per student is, um, for that. Because certainly if you have students, you have to have teachers at some point. We have capacity in the classroom.
Potentially. We're not adding teachers for adding one or two kids per classroom because, now, they've already, our class, I, I, it's all, well, it's all that, it's already, it's already come down a bit over the last few years. And so, our, our class sizes are, are desirable and some, you know, even better than desirable. So, you can bump up two, three students in a classroom, not create a huge problem. You'd be back at class sizes that we traditionally had, say, you know, three, four years ago, type of thing. And, and you wouldn't, and, and the point is, you wouldn't necessarily always be adding teachers, um, for X amount of students. You, it might be where you used to maybe add a teacher for every fifteen, twenty students added somehow. Uh, it, it might, that threshold might be a lot higher, and that's kind of my point, given, I, just again, given our current circumstances of where we're at. We, 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 we've had this leveling off, um, that, you know, allows us to absorb a little. Not a, you don't wanna absorb a ton, but you can absorb a little without it creating a problem and, and you probably, uh, create a situation, uh, tax-wise for everybody where they're a little bit, certainly better off. And, and again, it's, you know, it, I, I'm more of a, it'd be getting the, uh, commercial industrial base, continuing to get that built up and having an environment that creates that because that's, you know, there's no pizzcon with that, that's just the AV, that's additional resources for our district. So, that's, you know, I, and, and I'm sure you're.
And I'm on the same page with that, certainly. Um, my, my concern is that the villages, uh, isn't easy button, it's just adding houses and, uh, the villages tend to benefit from more rooftops, so the, the chambers that tend to, uh, work a lot with the, uh, uh, the villages on, on that. Uh, and then folks like i- in, in here, we, we don't really get a, a say in the matter. So, but are, are they taking their available space? Because at some point, you're gonna be landlocked. And are they doing the easy button with these low impact fees when they could be saving that land and building up more industrial? We could actually, you know, even out the, uh, the tax base a little bit here. So, that's a question.
Good point, yeah, that's a good point.
But that's a zoning, that's a zoning question, right? Because if areas are zoned as residential, they can't go and split the commercial property in there.
I know, we're not making changes.
Yeah.
Yeah, they can't, and, and that's.
But it takes a lot of time to do that.
This, again, that, I, I recall when we, you know, did these joint meetings, we got a better sense, you know, they would show us that type of stuff and we would get a better sense of that. And again, I, you know, because of, you know, the last four or five years, you know, we haven't met, I, I've kind of lost touch myself personally with what that looks like, and that's why I think you need to reengage in that with the village, get a sense of that. And then, then you can kind of stimulate all that information and figure out, hey, what's making sense here? And, and, and have that discussion on, hey, what, what, you know, what you think, uh, as a board, um, kind of recommendations would be for development fees, that type of stuff. That, that's where my head's at.
No, and I, I, I think it's good. Any other comments that Tony and I are gonna go back and talk about?
Yeah, no, I, I agree. Um, I also think, you know, the, the way I look at it, I've read more about impact fees than I'd like to. Um, but, um, I really think, you know, it is, is to have a healthy discussion with the village, but also understand, you know, where they're at. Because I think Huntley and the Algonquin have done a good job of attracting, uh, people to want to move out in this way, um, so they're able to still offer impact fees. If we were in a situation where they weren't getting the attraction to have people move out here, they may just get rid of impact fees, which would, you know, hamper us. So, I kind of look at it as like a donation right now of, you know, it's moving into, to us. Also, based on our budget right now, we're at a hundred and eighteen percent, uh, of our impact fee budget, six months through the year. So, I feel like, you know, we're, we're in a good spot, but I think it's worth a discussion. Um, but I think it's, it's not us asking for it, it's, uh, talking about it.
So, I guess the, the message here is, I don't know if this is an actionable thing, but we can go and, the board agree that we should go and have a discussion?
Yeah.
Uh, and maybe revisit those discussions with the villages and have that form of way.
Yep.
Absolutely, um, that should, that should be something that we do at least once every two years, you know, probably once a year.
Once a year.
Um, just to get a, uh, state of the village and a state of the district and, and have, um, have that information, uh, go back and forth.
Yeah, and, and I will, one last piece of just informational stuff, um, shared with me from the village, oh, Huntley. Um, they, they, you know, they currently are, I think, sixty-three percent of our EAV, but only, uh, represent, I believe, like fifty-five percent of our students. So, they are, they, they are on the, you know, ice, you know, they're on the, quote-unquote, right side of, of what's getting contributed in our district versus what is incoming into our district. And, and it's just, again, it's just further, our, our relationship with them has always been very good and, and very open and honest. And I think you, you, we just need to get back on track and have that, that type of discussion because, uh, what I wouldn't want to happen, and thankfully, I think, Lake and the Hills is landlocked because, uh, we just, we never talk to those people and they've never done us any favors while we're growing and building these schools, uh, from that standpoint. So, I think, uh, continue to have that really good open line because Huntley is probably, I believe, the biggest pipeline of what will be coming, um, in the future for us. It's, and, so does everybody like, yeah, we, we should, you know, we'll have.
I think it's a passion of mine.
Jessica, try and, try and set up something with them and, and other you guys initially set up all, you know, with, uh, even, uh, and, uh, Tim, it'd be Mark, and you, and Jessica, and just say, get a framework set up, future meeting, that would, that'd be great.
I'll go ahead and do that and then, and Drew, I'll just bring an update with the superintendent for, um, looking at those things. Perfect.
Good, good.
Thank you, Ray.
Good discussion.
Yes. Okay. Okay, we're on the building in progress, Mr. Troy.
Big long list tonight. Good evening, Mr. Winquist. Number nine dot one, O and M updates, if you would please.
Yeah, thank you to Mr. Altmeier for the update on the community solar. I have no other updates to add other than what's been presented to you. And I'll be happy to answer any questions might have.
Yeah, I don't have anything. Anybody else? Questions, comments? All right, moving on, pavement improvements, nine dot two, please.
At the beginning of the board meeting, you were handed a aerial view map of the high school and administration building. I just wanted to paint a picture of what the bids are going to be. So the high school is based in, and then you have alternate A and alternate B for the administration building.
Yeah.
So at the obvious first, committee of the whole meeting, Board of Education was presented with the, an update to the O and M lifecycle deferred maintenance capital projects reports, which included a one point four, just over one point four million dollar budget for deep pavement improvement. On January twenty second, we were, we did a bid opening for five, five bids, competitive bids that we received. Schroder asphalt came in at the lowest for a total of all three of those base bids, alternate bid, A and B. Also attached to this report is H R Green's recommendation for awarding this to Schroder asphalt. All that being said, the administration would like to recommend to the Board of Education to award this project to Schroder asphalt for one point two, one million two hundred fifty nine thousand eight hundred dollars, which comes in significantly lower than what we budgeted the project to be. Any questions?
A couple.
Yes.
So behind the high school in that, near the tennis court area.
Correct.
This was part of the base bid. Wasn't that recently done with all of the, the installation of the field house and whatnot?
There was not, that certainly wasn't.
That was not?
No.
Okay, okay. And then I have no problem with the high school parking lot, the door one.
Yeah, it's pretty bad. You guys have seen it lately, it's pretty bad.
Right. And then the, for the admin building, that's the bus area, if I'm reading this.
Correct, so last year, you see where the buses are parked, that was done last year with the additions where the electric buses are being parked.
Oh, I'm sorry, okay, I missed, I misread the map.
So follow that curving line to the west, that's all going to be new.
So this is looking at the garage area?
Yeah, it's around the transportation garage area.
Okay. Sorry, I misread the map.
And then alternate bid B is sidewalk at door five transportation.
Yes.
It's pretty bad. The curb is two inches tighter than the actual sidewalk. The peeing, settling bad, crumbling. We're looking to a monolithic sidewalk, so the sidewalk curb all in one piece. So we won't have an peeing in the future.
Do we have water on the pavement in the bus, the transportation area, the alternate bid A? Do we have sweaty pavement over there?
Um, to my knowledge, no.
I know this parking lot does.
Yeah.
We have a pool of water that comes, that seeps in through the cracks.
And then last summer, when we did that project, we found spring basically underneath. And we had to put in additional drainage.
You should have tapped it.
Here's the three momma does a chain there, so there's drainage.
And we could have sprinkled, you bottled it, right? No, just kidding. Okay, thank you for all of that. Thanks for indulging me. All right, so we're looking for the whole, the whole project here.
Yeah.
All, all things, and you said it came in under expectation.
Two hundred thousand under.
Yeah, correct.
Okay, do I have questions?
That's why we did alternate on this, because we wanted to ensure that we had flexibility in the project.
Sure.
So that if we, if, you know, if we came in over budget, you know, we could kick, can down the road, so to speak, if we needed to on the transportation side, where there's not a lot of traffic other than bus traffic in and out of the garage. You know, that is always an option. But, but since it came in several hundred thousand dollars over budget administratively.
Under budget.
Under budget. Did I say over budget? You said that, really?
Yeah.
Never say that. Um, I don't want to say that. We, we are opting to, to recommend moving forward with that based on what we currently have in the budget for FY twenty six. Now remember, this is part of the FY twenty six budget.
Correct.
Okay, the, the amount that was presented with the deferred maintenance plan is presented, I believe in August by Mr. Winquist. Those are the dollars that agreed with the FY twenty five budget and the five year plan as rolled. So when we roll this new plan, what we have set for capital projects for FY twenty six will be enough to cover this. And we'll, we'll probably have a few extra hundred thousand dollars in that budget that we can pull back into the general fund.
It's just, it's really more of a, a request and a, it would be really nice if you could put, if one would do these paving bids, because it seems like we're paving all the time. Like a little bit of a history of the paving. And maybe a metric with how much it costs per square foot, square yard, whatever the right method.
The unit prices.
So that we could compare the history of what we're looking at. Because it's, it's hard to really track because it seems like we're, we do a lot of paving. So we have a lot of permits too.
Yeah, but when we, we do the paving, we tend to try to do it correctly. So it's a little down the line that previously.
But then we could at least measure it a little bit. So just a request, make it a little bit to see how it reads. Thank you.
Yes, welcome.
All right, any other questions or comments? All right, for the committee, any objection with moving this forward then to the board meeting? All right, we'll go ahead and move that ahead then. Move it to item ten then, please.
All right, item ten, Board of Education, we'll start with item one, a discussion topic for us, Vision Twenty Thirty, Mr. Lombard.
Sure, so we have PowerPoint up there, I will kind of go through it. It is the one through the Vision Twenty Thirty team that put that together. But it was, ten years ago, there was Vision Twenty Twenty that educational leaders from five different organizations throughout the state got together to kind of do a vision for K twelve public education. Mr. Altmeier, you were part of that. One of the big things that came through that was about the finances and evidence-based funding. Dr. McCrystal, can you flip, I'll keep going, that's one, this is kind of the agenda, there's the organizations, so, oh, no. We don't need to see the video. There we go. So here's Twenty Twenty Goals and Outcomes. What was listed at that point, looking at the, the future of K twelve, was highly effective educators, twenty first century learning, shared accountability, and then the equitable and adequate funding. And as we talked about, the evidence-based funding, EBF, was really one of the really large positive things that came out of that. There's some other components in there about looking at, sorry, teacher recruitment, college and career readiness pieces of that. So we've kind of come forward, ten years, and some of the same individuals in these organizations came together looking at kind of that call to action of putting together Twenty Thirty, Dr. McCrystal. One more. And so some highlights there that come out of that is kind of looking at the future forward, future focused learning, reshaping our schools and classrooms and refining student success to reflect and prepare students for different ways that the world and economy continue to change. So some of those ideals that they're looking at here are centered around, Twenty Thirty is centered around resources for safe buildings, consideration of mandates, emerging career, career fields, and then excellent educators. Some of the policy there would promote future driven skills that allow for more college and career exploration, flexible pathways, early college opportunities. Some of these are things that are happening now, but it, again, it is to continue looking at policy to, to drive some of these components, to attract and retain a high quality and diverse educator pipeline and improve professional experiences. We've seen some of those things through the teacher vacancy grant and abilities that where we're able to identify areas that are high need, where there are not a lot of educators going into that. And how can we attract, as well as how can we support staff that we currently have getting additional endorsements and licensure, enhancing student safety and wellbeing? We know that our facilities need to be a place of welcoming, but also where students and families feel that their students are safe if we want to promote that positive learning that's going on. And then to promote curriculum and instructional flexibility to meet the needs of the local community. And so some of the components that are in here are going to look at ways that more of those decisions are happening at that local level. So the shared accountability pieces, some of the components here. We know that we talked about a little bit that we had one of our math teachers at the high school being part of a committee, looking at different things with assessment and how do we do. But thinking beyond the annual standardized tests to more fairly and effectively measure student success. You know, each year we talk about the school report card and how we've done on the IAR or SAT now, soon be ACT, and what those are important. What other components do you look at student success and how we are doing as a district? So reform around the Illinois assessment system to be more timely, to be more useful measure of student proficiency and growth. Looking at reform to current accountability systems to provide local flexibility and for identifying indicators of success at that more holistic view. And reform the mandate process to ensure implementation process procedures that promote flexibility in that piece of that local decision making. So this kind of, that slide is really, again, looking at that. We've had a lot of discussion over data, and that is one pulse, one piece that we do look at, but we know so much more goes into that. And that is something that, you know, with I S B, they're looking at, how do we get more timely data in the school's hands to be able to make decisions? We get it, by the time we're able to share and talk about it, it's October. Where are we a quarter into the school year? And how do we, again, look at meaningful assessments, real time data and those school ratings? And that policy around the assessment system, accountability and that mandating piece of that. And then predictable funding. So looking at protecting the integrity and the funding of the evidence-based funding formula, strengthening public education's retention reforms when we think about the tier one and tier two. You know, a lot of people are looking at that tier two, I'm not going into education, you know, what, what does that mean? And there's some, some different things that have come out, some different things that have been tried to be pushed forward. I think we know that something needs to change there, but what does that look like? Establishing equitable statewide funding resources for capital and safety needs, and enhancing questionable school, our financial question, whether it's for our school districts. So that next slide is just kind of talking about, again, rethinking those current structures. How do we, again, develop things that are fair and equitable? And then address a little niche at that time. Mr. Altmeier, I believe you were part of this component, that financial component of this organization that was working on Twenty Thirty. So if there's anything you want to jump in on, you can go ahead.
No, I would just add, you know, it was, it was robust. It was a great conversation between the school board and the superintendent's association and the school business association surrounding all of this, right? We met on several occasions, a few on Zoom, one down in Bloomington. A large group of individuals with a focus on students, with a focus on school district, with a focus on, we need to be driving the legislators rather than the legislators driving us. So there was a lot of talk on a lot of different things, mandates on the finance side. But, but we did talk a lot about EBF, right, the evidence-based funding. And if you pull up that first bullet you had on one of those slides, if you go back.
Dr. McCrystal, please go back. Yeah.
Keep going, funding, that, that slide right there. Protect the integrity and the funding of the evidence-based funding formula. As we all know, it's really up to the state to decide each and every year when they pass the budget, whether or not they're going to set three hundred or three hundred and fifty million dollars aside, right? Today it's three hundred million for the evidence-based formula. It's fifty million for the property relief, the tax grant that we just talked about. And since the inception of the EBF, the state had had those funds to set aside three hundred and fifty million dollars each and every year.
Additional funds.
Additional funds.
Every year.
Over and above, right, holding, holding every school district, you know, hold harmless, so to speak, year after year. And so it's really critical if we're going to make movement on adequacy that the state continue to do that, at a minimum, right? Because from an adequacy percentage perspective, if you even look at our district, even though over the last five or six years we have received, you know, we've gone from tier two to tier one and whatnot, we have only moved a few percentage points up in adequacy, right? And that's because the state is only setting three hundred and fifty million dollars aside each and every year, over and above what they previously did. And so what that really talks about is we need to ensure that the state is going to continue to do that. Because if they don't do that, school districts are going to struggle, right? If there is no additional funding for school districts year after year, what we all know, right? Based on union contracts and employee salaries and health insurance and everything else that we're dealing with in this economy, it is critical that the state come through and that those dollars aside. So that's where that bullet was kind of coming from. And we said it so many ways and we ended up saying it that way. So that's probably the biggest piece that we thought of it. And so the, the focus of Vision Twenty Thirty is, right? That's the, that is what we're all going to live by. In every legislative conversation with education down at the state of Illinois, these are the rules that we're going to drive and focus on. And if the legislators get outside of this arena, we're going to try to reel them back in to stay within Vision Twenty Thirty because we feel this is so important and critical, which is why they're asking every school district in the state that having their boards, you know.
Yeah, that'd be so, yeah, I think that, that's.
Look at that.
But that, all of these other components tie exactly into that financial, right? All of the things that they're looking at doing, all of the things that we want to do. If the funding and the finances isn't there, those things are unable to get done. So it centers around, when I think about, we're, we're marking on the strategic plan, right, for our district, I'm kind of focused on these four areas. Mr. Altmeier, thank you for that piece of that funding piece because it's going to make all of the other things be able to be done. And that's keeping the students safe, keeping high quality educators in front of our students and attracting them, enhancing that post-secondary success and improving our measures of what's working. And so you highlighted that, one more slide, Dr. McCrystal. And this is exactly what Mr. Altmeier was kind of alluding to there, it's that call to action, right? What they're asking, in, in Twenty Twenty, ninety percent of the school districts set out a resolution and adopted a resolution in support of Twenty Twenty. I don't know that, I can't speak for all the districts who didn't, didn't mean they didn't support, but there were other ways that maybe they were working with their legislators. There were many times that we had people from the board, Mr. Altmeier, that you were down, you know, talking about, you know, helping write some of the bills and, and whatnot. And so that call to action really is what we need to discuss here is, do we want to bring a resolution forward to a future board meeting and adopting that resolution, which, again, just as Mr. Altmeier talked about, would be our way of helping to communicate to the legislators that we support this vision that as conversations are maybe going off in a different direction, that it's another way of supporting, hey, we need to bring it back to this. These are what our district feels are important and are in support of the, the work that these five organizations did do. And so again, as districts are able to come together and support this, it's kind of showing those common goals for what can impact education, K twelve here in Illinois. And, and I know they say that, I'm going to go pre-K through life, right? So we'll incorporate all of those because we know that that funding and, and these same values are important regardless of our three-year-olds all the way through our twenty-two-year-olds. So kind of that was that in a nutshell. I know I sent out information and some different toolkits. It's, it's always good to be able to hear from somebody who's been on the grass, you know, the grassroots and the ground of that. I know you heard about some of the other areas, even though you were mainly in that financial component of that. But any questions for either myself or Mr. Altmeier could answer? And then a discussion of should we bring a resolution forward to discuss and look at adopting at a future meeting in support of Vision Twenty Thirty?
Do you, do any of you guys remember, we were one of the ninety percent or we were the ten percent?
So I asked about that, I do. Mr. Altmeier, you didn't think we'd draw the resolution to Twenty Twenty, but Mr. Troy, you were. So I asked about that. I do, Mr. Altmaier, you didn't think we brought a resolution to 2020, but Mr. Troy, you were here or do you recall if we did?
Tony was here.
Right, so do you recall if we couldn't, we did not think so, but I know we were doing some of the other components of support of that. So I don't think it was we didn't support 2020. I just don't know that we brought a resolution.
They don't think that we did a resolution. We showed up, but we didn't for whatever reason.
Yeah, I can tell you in 2020, we would have been, other things.
Well, it would have been 2010.
It would have been like 2010.
Oh, 2020 was the target year of it, so it would have been like 2016, like right now.
2015, it would have been 2015, too. I remember in 2015.
But again, I, you know, I read these, these Vision 2030, I feel like this was our vision back in 2020. So these are not inconsistent with anything that we've been, we've stood for or we've been doing for forever. So I'm not opposed to it at all. This is consistent. Nothing there that concerns me about supporting it.
Yeah, I guess, I dug into it a little bit. I guess I'll start the conversation. I'm not really in favor with it. Don't really see anything that's addressing some of the problematic schools in Illinois. I don't see anything targeted towards trying to help the schools that have 0% proficiency in Illinois. And it seems like those are some of the bigger problems that we shouldn't be going after if you're going to look at this from an Illinois perspective. There are some things that are good. I like the dual degree stuff, making it easier for teachers to get accredited to teach dual degree classes. I think that's excellent. The batch result is better. There's some data connectivity in there as well that could be better. A little worried that Illinois isn't be able to figure out how to get everybody on the same platform to send the data. There's a bit of the standards, they're arguing they're aligning with the national standards. What it's really doing is lowering the standards in Illinois. They're just going to drop the cut score. That's pretty clear in there, so it'll make the numbers look better on that level. I do agree pretty strongly with the agree on the focus of growth is higher waiting for those who are currently not proficient. I think that's something that definitely should be there. There's a little bullet in there. They want to de-emphasize chronic absenteeism on the face of it. From what I read, seems absurd. Not really sure where that came from. They want to get rid of some of the scores for all the schools to kind of muddle up the rankings a little bit. So again, without the details of how that could be done, that could be an absolute disaster. They are redefining the word mandate. They get, some are absolute mandates and some are discretionary mandates on that. So obviously, but that was in favor of the state is always trying to push these mandates. And they are talking about the tier one, tier two issue, but they're not open to all the ideas. They were all defined benefit plans. And if you look at the states that are rated the best for teacher retirement systems, they're all moving to defined contribution. And they're not just open to that, it looks like in the bullets that I saw. And student mobility wasn't even a part of the discussion there. I think potentially do what a lot of states are doing, which allows students to open enrollment to different districts in public schools to help people move around and maybe get out of a school that's not performing that well. So I'm not really in favor of this. I think this is the wrong direction.
I think you're right. It's probably missing a few things. I don't know that, I mean, help me out when you talk about that and the retirement systems. What was meant by that?
So they ranked the teachers' retirement system.
As far as how well they're funded, how well they're.
So Illinois was number 42 or something like that. So there was a funding issue, but specifically the tier two side of things. Because everybody has to wait so long to actually retire, it's different than, so tier one, it's rated higher than tier two.
Correct.
Obviously, in that ranking, they were.
Yeah, I can't, just intuitively, I can't imagine that there's many states that have more lucrative retirement benefits than ours. Ours are substantial.
I think tier two, that's not the case anymore.
Right, and you're right because the.
There's a problem with tier two they need to fix.
Yeah.
Once they fix that, they're not going to be ranked in 42 anymore, for sure.
Yeah, I can't.
The reason they're 42 is it's all right.
And again, it's not a big deal. I'm just concerned about, I mean, because our teachers have a pretty substantial retirement system in the state as do other public employees. So that, the piece.
The other piece was that I was surprised to see many that were in the top, people that slipped. Because I think argued for if you're a new teacher, where should you go?
Right.
And a lot of them were defined contribution plans. And guessing it's the mobility of that plan that allows you kind of like 401K.
Yeah.
You can move from district to district or state to state and you can carry your retirement with you. Now, you're kind of locked in.
Like you're locked in and you need to, here's the service.
Right, and you're locked into a state, sometimes a locality, and that's not really the best for the teacher.
Definitely not. Went to their mobile and, yeah.
So that was the commentary there that, I'm not saying that's the right answer, but it didn't even look like they were open to that. I read through it. Again, this is just my opinion reading the reputation I think. Any other comments on this?
So I looked at this a little bit differently. Because there are so many organizations that sign on to this, everybody's got their own agenda. School board association, business officials, all the ones that were listed on there. The rural communities, the northern communities, all of them have their own priorities. And I think it's going to be very hard to come up with a list that shares everybody's interests equally. And so they have to start someplace. And if that has to start someplace for education overall, to have a voice in the state of Illinois, amongst these different organizations, you need that starting point somewhere. And not like any good bargain, not everybody's going to get what they want 100% of the time. So I look at this as a starting point in advancing that conversation and providing that unified voice between these organizations to at least find where that common ground is and let's move forward on the common ground rather than nitpicking on the things that we want that somebody else doesn't want. So to me, this is a, an opportunity to be part of a larger conversation than just what, what we want as a school board or what school boards want. It's everybody that's at that table.
Other comments?
Well, I get, I get what you're saying because it does not, but it's hard in a document like this to fulfill all of our things. And this may be exactly why we probably didn't do this back in 2015.
Exactly.
Is because, you know, a lot of it, you know, maybe 75% of it's great and we're dead on, right on. And I'll be honest, I was focused on the bullet points, that's some of the detail that I'm seeing in here. So now I'm seeing some of the detail and some of the stuff you brought up. Yeah, there's definitely some items that we would consider with.
Right.
And so is a blanket yes on it? I don't, yeah, I, so I don't know. I would be a little bit more wishy washy on doing that.
Other comments? Sorry.
Yeah, no.
All right, with that, we kind of have the, how we talk. All right, with that, back to the agenda. We will move to 10.2, updated Board of Education calendar. Somebody wants, I'm offering to.
Well, actually, we want to have a more robust end of the year curriculum workshop. So I bet we're not, even though we're small and intimate with attendance, we're going to grow that even more for the next one. But with some of the conversation that we had there, where we originally had put that and the way we kind of had structured those last year, we're rethinking how to have that as a more meaningful conversation. So for those of us who are there and our community who were there, think around the table being, having discussion about the data and where we were starting, it would be really great to see kind of, while we won't have the state testing event, we will have our local data from where we were in the fall to where we were and in the spring. And so when we had first kind of picked those dates of where to do that, that hadn't been totally fleshed out. So we would like to recommend for that to have a more robust conversation that if we were to do that in early June, which I believe was a date we were going to have as a committee as a whole, so it wouldn't be a new date, we just flipped that because that way we're able to analyze and put that together. And so that then took the April, the previous recommendation and moved that to a cow on that date there. And so it's just kind of changing those for a little bit more of a robust curriculum, what workshop. And kind of not, just put a toy with saying, no, let's not have a committee of the whole. In April, I think we can at the end of the year look at how did that go with our months that where we only had one meeting? We can have those conversations moving into next year, but just really flip flopping that time. I did change the one on there because the Thursday that we normally would have is June 19th, we wouldn't have that. It then put us at the end of the month. I just felt for fiscal things or if there's anything we needed to do to close out, I made a recommendation here to throw that on the 12th a little bit earlier, just in case there were some things. Usually we have around those times, we hand book those things like that, right, that we have to have set for the next year.
That was my flip inappropriate comment about the time off was I didn't understand why we moved the.
No, we're just saying. So there we go. So that's the recommendation for the 12th again, you know, as we look through those things and as we go through the work. This would be a more productive meeting date.
The curriculum meeting moving into the end of the year actually makes a lot.
A objection of moving this forward to approving, then we'll get those updated and posted on the website.
Makes complete sense.
Thank you. There you go. And now you all have your time off.
Well, you put the rationale in the memo, so it makes sense.
Perfect, thank you.
All right, 10.3, the minute. Any comments from the minute? Whether we move those forward? And then we move to number 11, public comments. Anybody want to make a public comment?
Okay. As a future late program parent, with Taylor being less than four years out from it, I want to publicly thank everyone involved in making that building finally come to fruition. I will forever wish that it hadn't taken moving adult students back to middle school to sound the alarm. I'll also forever wish that it hadn't taken so much to prove that it wasn't acceptable and that the adults in the late program deserved the home. But the timing, I suppose, had to be what it was. And I'm hopeful for the outcomes for the students that will benefit from this new space. I do think that the students and the parents from the last five years should be given an apology for the constant shuffling and that they'll never reap the benefits of their sacrifices in advocating. But I'm also thankful to those parents and some of the students that spoke up to make a difference for the current and future late students. Thank you all for finally making it happen. The real win is that ultimately this brought so much awareness to the late program as a whole and to many who had never even heard of it or knew that Huntley offers such a program. This focus brought so much of our community together for the benefit of some of our most vulnerable students that can't always speak up for themselves. And that was truly incredible to see at the ribbon cutting ceremony. So now that it is up and running, I hope that the interest and focus remains on their continued success throughout our district and our community, so it will still be somewhat or somewhere that Taylor will be able to thrive. Now, I want to address the increased helping comment. You wouldn't want to add students to classrooms now that you're asking teachers to be therapists and so technologically advanced. Increased class sizes and worse teacher to student ratio, I guarantee that that would trigger some emotion for both parents and staff. This also ties into the FDL screener and the ability for real time data. With a better staff to student ratio, it would allow teachers more ability to take closer attention rather than things falling between the cracks. It also helps children feel more seen and heard, which would help their FDL and academics. As we saw on the ACES presentation a while back, these are very closely related. But instead, we look to throw more work on the teachers with assessments and screeners rather than addressing the true issue and lightening their load and letting them get back to focusing on the students. Teachers want to teach. They get into this career to make a difference and they end up so far from that and it burns them out and turns them away. I know that I'm just a parent, but I see lots of work put into these fancy presentations. But is any of it getting to the root of the issue and making a difference for the students or the teachers? And at the end of the other presentation, it was mentioned that there was a video shared with the staff and students on the purpose of the screener. Can that be shared with the parents? So we can see what perspective was being told to our children.
Thank you, Ms. Rothman. Thank you for your dedication and bringing your voice for the light goal. All right, with that, I will move to number 12, closed session. So we will move into closed session at 8:59.
Can I say the only thing we have is minutes? So if you want to go down and do those, no? Or if you want to move those to the next closed session, it's up to you.
Move to the closed session. If it's minutes, minutes, next to you.
Sharon, you okay with that?
Yeah.
All right, with that, we will, we will, I'll make a motion to remove number 12 moving down to closed session. Can I have a second? Thank you, Mr. Rothman. Can I have a vote, should we remove number 12?
Mr. Craddy?
Yes.
Mr. Bivens?
Yeah.
Mr. Troy?
Yes.
Mr. Quagian?
Yes.
Mrs. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Thompson?
Yes.
Mrs. Wiley?
Yes.
All right, with that, number 14, adjournment. I'll make a motion to adjourn the meeting at nine o'clock PM. All in favor? Okay, a second.
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Quagian. All in favor?
All right.
All votes. All right, meeting adjourned.